Ms. Speaker.
Session is resumed.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. You're zero pala ng obligation. Ay nangyari po because the Farmers Cooperative Association, almost all of them, their readiness is not there as proponents for wala ho masyadong nakakapag ano ng mga requirements. That's why hindi pa ho namin na-roll out itong mga ibang programa ng Kadiwa.
Katulad po ng sinasabi ko, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, napakarami pong magagandang programa ang ating DA, pre-harvest and post-harvest po. Katulad na po nitong Sagip Saka Act and ito pong Kadiwa, pero ang nagiging balakid ay ang napakarami pong requirements, no? Katulad ng sinabi ko kanina, can we agree together through the distinguished sponsor, together with the DA, kung paano po natin tingnan ang mga requirements na ito, no? Paano natin itong simplihan lahat, not only sa post-harvest, pati po sa pre-harvest ng sagayon itong mga programang ito po, ay maibaba natin sa lalong madaling panahon? Napakalaking kasalanan nito, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, na nandyan 'yung pera, hindi natin maibaba. Hindi po pahirap, hindi po dapat mahirap ang requirement. Kaya po tayo nagtatag ng mga itong programa para maibaba ng mabilisan.
Ms. Speaker, the Department of Agriculture has promised a catch-up plan where in the first quarter of 2024, we will roll out fully this project. And as we've mentioned a while ago, it is also a problem of them having yun nga, 'yung readiness nila to absorb all these programs. And trainings have been put here. It is a matter of time when they will be able to be ready for this, then we can easily distribute all these programs of the Department of Agriculture. Sa Sagip Saka po, ang application, disbursement up to first quarter din ng 2024 po.
Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, gaya ng sinasabi ko kanina, I would like a commitment from the DA na tingnan po natin lahat ito, from pre-harvest, post-harvest, lahat po ng mga programa na hindi po nagagalaw. Tingnan po natin at tayo po ang maging enabler. Tayo pong nasa pamahalaan, tayo po ang dapat lumalapit sa taong bayan. Tayo po ang dapat gumagawa ng paraan para po itong mga tulong na ito at mga ayuda ay maibaba sa kanila ng sa lalong madaling panahon. Pag ito po ay naibaba natin, sigurado po ako, makukuha natin, maabot, ma-achieve natin 'yung pinapangarap nating lahat na 20 pesos na bigas, na siyapong, isa rin pong pinapangarap ng ating mahal na pangulo.
Ms. Speaker, I join the distinguished gentleman Wilbert Lee in making sure that we will streamline the requirements so that most of the FCA's will be able to get all these programs of the Sagip Saka and also the Kadiwa. And we are actually in, we obligated this at we target 96% obligation this year. And so it's a matter of rolling it out by the first quarter of 2024.
My next question, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsors, is with regards to the RSBA. Nung last budget hearing ito po ay pinunan natin, pero ngayon taon po, nakita po natin na meron pang 506 million ang RSBSA na hindi po nagagastos. Napakahalaga po ng listahan na ito dahil ito po ang basehan ng lahat ng mga kakatanggap ng ayuda. Kaya nung nakarang taon ito po ay tinutulak natin na makompleto na at madigitize. Ano na ba ang status nito, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor? Bakit po may 500 million pang hindi nagagastos para sa programang ito? How does this affect our objective to finish the RSBA database? Kailan po talaga ma-achieve ang full integration of this information or data sets from other agri-databases like Fisher Folk Registration Systems or FISAR and the National Coconut Farmers Registry System? Can we have a concrete timeline and ano 'yung resources needed to achieve this? Looking forward po ako, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, to work with the DA family if there is needed budget to fully systematize and digitize the RSBSA and make it a reliable database of farmers and fisher folks, integrating all this data set so we can know who can legitimately receive targeted assistance from the government. Lahat po ito mahalagang programa for agri-fishery sectors. Muli po, hindi po pwedeng hanggang pag-oobligate lang. We need implementation, especially billions of pesos will be invested again in the DA from the 2024 budget.
Ms. Speaker, regarding the RSBSA utilization, we actually have a 66.38%, and this is just the end of the quarter, but we have also one more quarter to go. And I understand from the Department of Agriculture that we will be fully obligated and use these funds by the end of December. And so we are on track, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for the commitment from the DA, through the sponsor. Maybe our committee on appropriations misconduct and oversight meeting every true month para komustain po itong commitment sa atin ng DA, of course with the support of our dear sponsor.
We actually welcome the oversight committee's report later on in investigation so that we can actually push the Department of Agriculture to make sure that the obligation will be finished by December, Ms. Speaker.
May ilang tanong na lang ako tungkol sa fishery sector, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Ito po ay tungkol sa issue ng delineation of municipal and commercial fishing and its boundaries. There were disputes on this matter at kailangan ng science-based reference to once and for all address this issue. Ang laging tanong kasi sa BIFAR, ano ang basis nito? Nasimula na ba ng BIFAR ang study na to?
Can you repeat the question, Ms. Speaker?
Regarding the issue of the delineation of municipal and commercial fishing and its boundaries, there were disputes on this matter at kailangan ng science-based reference to once and for all address this issue. Ang laging tinatanong, ang laging tanong sa BIFAR, ano ang basis nito? Ano ang basis ng 15 kilometers para maging municipal water siya? Ano ang basis para siya ay maging commercial fishing ground? In the interest of time, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, sasabay-sabayin ko na po, ang aking tanong po patungkol dito, paano ba ginagawa ng BIFAR ang operasyon sa paghuli sa mga lumalabag sa polisiyang ito? Nakikipag-coordinate ba ang BIFAR sa Philippine Coast Guard? Or may mga iba pang ahensyang kaagapay nito? Ilan po ba ang mga nahuli nung nakarang taon? At if may datos, ilan po ang nahuli ngayon 2023? May the sponsor enlighten us also on how the BIFAR is protecting the municipal fisher folks from commercial fisherman given this clear policy in the Fisheries Code?
Ms. Speaker, with your question a while ago about the ecosystem-based scientific, it is already 70% completed and we await na lang the 30%. With regards to the Philippine Coast Guard and ahensyang kaagapay, the BIFAR through the FMA, which is the Fisheries Management Areas Program, in coordination with the Philippine Coast Guard, PNP Marina, Academy and Concerned Local Government Units, regular conducts land-based and sea-based patrol to prevent IUU fishing. Apprehensions are being conducted by confiscating the fishing vessels and gears used while the crew are being detained with due process. Violators are subjected to legal proceedings. In addition, Ms. Speaker, for lack of time, I would like to submit to Congress the list of those that are apprehended in the cases that you are requesting and also to the distinguished gentleman.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. May I also ask for the status of that study? Pwede bang mag-submit na rin dun po sa study kung hanggang saan na po ito, with regards to the delineation between the municipal and the commercial fishing line, no?
Ms. Speaker, we would be happy to provide the congressman about the studies within this week, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Busog na tayo sa magagandang batas, pero gutom naman ang kababayan natin sa maayos at mabilis na implementasyon nito. We need to level up our interventions toward food security. Ms. Speaker, that's all for now. Thank you for the support and cooperation of our good sponsor. Gaya ng sinabi ko last year, hindi na po kinakabahan ngayon. Siya po ang aking mentor dito. Maraming salamat po, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Thank you Congressman Lee.
Majority Leader.
Ms. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Sir Yu Dagook of the APEC Partilis for his interpretation.
The Honorable Representative Dagook of Partilis APEC is recognized to interpolate the sponsor.
Thank you once again, Ms. Speaker, Majority Leader. Sa mga Taga-Department of Agriculture and its attached agencies, to the distinguished sponsor, magandang gabi po sa ating lahat. Dalawa lang po 'yung katalungan ko, Ms. Speaker, unang-una. Kailan po matapos ni NFA na maipatupad 'yung distribusyon of 25 kilos na rice sa lahat ng mga government employees? Kasi patapos na po 'yung 2023, 2022 pa po to? Kailan po?
Ms. Speaker, the 230,000 bags are actually on its way to the Philippines right now. So matatapos po natin na ganito.
Buong Pilipinas na ba? Kasi 'yung report niyo sinadmit sa akin for purposes lang na may habol ninyo bago mag-budget deliberation. Nakasintro kayo sa Karaga at saka sa Dinagat. Malinaw namamam po during the budget briefing. Hindi po ako nagtatanong sa Dinagat lang at sa Karaga. Ang tinatanong ko po buong Pilipinas because I am talking of the administrative order.
Ms. Speaker, it's actually, we have already complied with that except for NCR, Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, are you telling this representation na kompleto na po 'yung example, 'yung sinadmit niyo Dinagat, kompleto na?
Ms. Speaker, 'yung sa Dinagat?
Dinagat po 'yung sinadmit, Ms. Speaker.
'Yun sa Dinagat? Ms. Speaker, in the Karaga region, NFA distributed to 61,035 beneficiaries, 30,517.50 bags of rice equivalent to 38,146,875 requirements in that region, Ms. Speaker, including 2,478 beneficiaries in Dinagat Island as reported, Ms. Speaker. And we will submit to the congressman this report.
Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I have already a copy of that report. But what I'm saying, Ms. Speaker, is that hindi po totoo na in the case of Dinagat nakadistribute na lahat. There are still a lot of agencies doon na hindi panabigyan. And I'm not only talking, distinguished sponsor, of Dinagat and Karaga. I'm talking of the whole country na mga government employees. So kailan niyo po mabigyan lahat 'yung natitira na hindi panabigyan? Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Ms. Speaker, we plan to complete this by the end of December as we can see in this report that there are already 83.95% completion and distribution, Ms. Speaker. And we will certainly ascertain on why you feel that Dinagat has not given its fair share and we will investigate accordingly right away, Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, no? I agree that you have already distributed to Dinagat, but it is not true that you have distributed all agencies in Dinagat. There are still a lot, so kindly review. Di commentin dihan bakit nagreport kayo ng ganon. This is the same thing with the next issue that I will be bringing. 'Yung irrigation, sinabi niyo irrigation, pero national lang ang nandoon walang tubig, so national lang walang irrigation. But I am already satisfied. Basta you are committed to deliver that or to release that on or before January 25, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Para magamit na Manila sa Pasco, 'yung 25 kilos. Dalawang taon na 25 kilos, hindi pa natin maibigay.
Ms. Speaker, this representation in the Department of Agriculture will ensure that by December, we will be able to deliver 100%, Ms. Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished sponsor. Now, the second issue is about the irrigation. Ito 'yung sinasabi ko. First question, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Ilan hectares ba sa buong Pilipinas ang irrigable natin?
3 million hectares, Ms. Speaker.
Out of the 3 million hectares, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, ilan hectare nga na po 'yung nairiget na natin?
Around 2 million, Ms. Speaker.
Around 2 million? And that includes, the count includes those irrigation that you have constructed in Dinagat? Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor?
Yes, Ms. Speaker.
Oh, so that, that figure is wrong because you have irrigation, but there is no water. Do not count if you only constructed the irrigation. Ang bilangin ninyo, 'yung irrigation na nakonstrak na may tubig na dumadaloy. Hindi lang po 'yung sa lupa namin ang irrigation na walang tubig. Marami papusad Dinagat. Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, with all due respect, sino nandito ba 'yung in charge sa Surigao del Norte?
I answer your first question, Ms. Speaker, for Dinagat?
Ah, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I am asking, nandito ba 'yung in charge sa Surigao del Norte? Bye-bye.
Yes, Ms. Speaker.
Can I ask, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, what is the frequency of her visit to the irrigation under her area? What is the frequency?
One, you need suspension, Ms. Speaker.
Session suspended.
Wag niyo pong bilangin, Ms. Speaker, 'yung itlo na hindi panapipisa.
Ms. Speaker?
Session is resumed.
Ms. Speaker, to answer my good friend from Dinagat Congressman Dagook, the issue in Dinagat is the inadequate water supply in irrigable areas, meaning there is irrigation there without water sometimes. In barangays Antunino, Libho, Dinagat Island, these are caused due to severe heat and water level of dam continuously reducing, being reduced, which would eventually result in inefficient water supply to main canals and lateral canals. But Ms. Speaker, my good friend, the Department of Agriculture is recommending that we add additional solar water pump projects and we are requesting for an augmentation of 15 million pesos so that these irrigation canals now can become real irrigation canals with water, Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, no? Napakaganda po 'yung sinabi mo, but for the record, no? Hindi ko po't tinatanong for Dinagat only. What I'm telling is, itong nangyari sa Dinagat na maraming irrigation ginawa pero walang tubig is for me a tip of the iceberg. Nangyari po ito sa buong Pilipinas sa tingin ko. That's why I am bringing this matter to this hall. Baka kasi magkano na naman ngayon 'yung hinehingi ng National Irrigation Administration para sa mga bagong project ng irrigation. Kasi aside doon sa isang area na 'yan, sa Cagneyo, may dalawa pang area na lumita. Sinabihan na nila 'yung taga-irrigation, that's why hinanap ko kanina 'yung babae na in charge doon. Sinabihan na ng mga magsasaka doon walang tubig dyan. Pinilit paring kinonstrak, tapos pinareceive sa mga irrigators. So, ang question is number one, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Ano ba talaga ang patakaran ng National Irrigation Administration? 'Yung lifecycle ng irrigation, mula sa pag-request dito ng budget sa Congresso hanggang sa pagkonstrak? After ba nakonstrak 'yan, pabayaan na lang ng hindi isupirvise kung nagagamit pa, kung may dumadaloy na tubig, kung walang magreklamo, sakalang puntahan doon? That's why I am asking a while ago, 'yung frequency ng visit. Kaya nga may satellite office. Anong ginagawa niya doon sa air conditioning office ng National Irrigation? Ang sino supirvise niya, 'yung irrigation, hindi 'yung room niya? Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, linawin natin, may supervision ba kayo o puntahan lang ninyo kung may magreklamo? Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor?
Ms. Speaker, the senior undersecretary Pangadiban has assured me that we will admonish all regional directors that do not visit and actually report factual cases here in the Department of Agriculture, especially that this department is headed by no less than the president. And I assure the Congressman Dagook that I too myself will join you in this call and that's one of the reasons why we want the subcommittee to actually investigate those non-performing personnels of the Department of Agriculture so that we can get to the bottom of all these projects, Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, for the interest of time, ayaw ko pong patagal ito. Pero sana magiging eye-opener to. Year in, year out, nagbibigay tayo ng bilyong punto sa National Irrigation. Sisiguraduhin natin na 'yung irrigation na kanila ni konstrak ay napakinabangan ng mga magsasaka. Malaki pong problema natin sa bigas, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. At ang kanang kamay ng rice production ay irrigation po. Tapos ganon-ganon na lang, pabayaan na lang, basta lang makonstrak, iparesip. 'Yung mga pinareceive ninyo na irrigators association, mga kamag-anak ko, kilala ko po, nire-receive lang nila dahil sinabihan, pirma lang kayo dahil tapos na. That is not the purpose of constructing irrigation. The purpose of constructing irrigation para may patubig 'yung lugar na kailangang mairegit para makapagtanim ng palay hindi po hanggang makonstrak lang. I hope that the Department of Agriculture, where this National Irrigation is an attached agency, sigurohin po natin na mapakinabangan 'yung irrigation natin hindi basta lang tapusin bayaran 'yung contractor at 'yung in charge ninyo pupunta lang doon kung may magreklamo. Maraming salamat, Ms. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. I hope this is an eye-opener to NIA and to the Department of Agriculture. Naghihirap na po tayo ng paghanap ng punto, tapos ganon-ganon na lang. Maraming salamat po, Ms. Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker, and I would like to assure the gentleman that the Department of Agriculture will surely look into this and make sure that everyone is working properly and all irrigation canals should have water. Thank you Congressman Dagook for your insightful and very helpful query.
Majority Leader.
Ms. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Lord Dante Marcoletta of the Sagip Partilis for his manifestation.
The distinguished Honorable Marcoletta of Sagip Partilis is recognized, interpolate the sponsor. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat po, Ms. Speaker, maraming salamat, Ms. Sponsor. This is more of a manifestation than an interpolation. Ito po ay bunsod po ng kagustuhan ng representative na ito na makatulong po kung paano natin maibababa ang presyo ng bigas ating bansa. Alam po natin na pinagsisikapan ng ating pamahalaan, nagkaroon pa nga po ng price cap sa bigas. Bagamat, ito po ay isang masakit na hakbang, ngunit kailangan pong gawin ng ating pangulo sapagat naaalala niya po ang kalagayan ng mga mahihirap nating kababayan. Ngunit dahil po dyan ay gumawa po kami sa panig namin, Ms. Speaker, your honor, ng isang experiment. Kinausap ko po 'yung ating mga kaibigan sa private sector, more particularly 'yung pong Pampanga Chamber of Commerce. Ang ginawa po namin ay bumili kami ng bigas na ito po ay harvested na sa isang barangay. Ang buying price po namin is the prevailing price of the NFA, which today is 19 pesos per kilo. Dadagdagan po namin 'yun ng tatlong peso para maging 23 pesos. Masaya po 'yung farmer, Ms. Speaker, your honor, dahil kung bibili lang ng 19, parang talo pa siya, sabi niya. Pero sa kabuwang tatlong pisong dagdag, masaya na po siya, Ms. Speaker, dagdag na 3 pesos per kilo of palay. Ang sumunod po ay dinala namin ang aming nabiling palay sa mga millers. At ang recovery rate po pala ng palay is about 65%. Ang natitirang bigas pagkatapos na ipakiskis 'yung palay. Medyo mababa po ng konti sapagat medyo 'yung nakita naming mga millers mga ano na po eh, medyo luma na po. Kung ang nakuha naming mga millers, 'yung pong medyo bago-bago, baka ang recovery rate is only, is about 70%. Magkano po namin binayaran 'yung pagpapakiskis ng palay? It's only 2 pesos and 90 centavos, Ms. Speaker. Bababa pa po 'yun kung ibibigay namin 'yung na-recover naming darak, which is 10% nung pong binili namin na palay. 'Yung pong binlid, Ms. Speaker, your honor, is about 1.4%. May bebenta po nung miller 'yun ng 10 pesos per kilo, both binlid at saka 'yung darak. Alam po ba ninyo ang nangyari? Naibenta po namin doon sa mga rank and file employees po nung sinasabi ko sa inyong mga businessmen sa Pampangas Chamber at 35 pesos per kilo. So pwede po palang mangyari, Ms. Speaker, masarap na bigas at 35 pesos. Masaya pa po ang mga farmers sapagat may dagdag nakita sila. Ang ibig lamang pong sabihin nito, pagpapasok pala, Ms. Speaker, ang private capital imbes na subsidin ang gobyerno, mas madali po eh. Mas hindi tayong mahirapan sapagat kung inaakala po ng iba na kailangan nating ibabaan tarifa, magsasakripisyo namamam po 'yung mga public services natin. Dito papasok ang private capital para makatulong. At babalik namamam po sa kanila 'yung puhunan, iikot lang. Sa kwenta po namin, tumubo pa ng dalawang peso per kilo ng bigas. 'Yun pong nagkapital. Kaya babalik lamang po 'yun paulit-ulit, kung ito po ay marere replicate natin, Ms. Speaker, your honor. Malaking bagay po na makakatulong po sa ating mga mamayan. Ang tawag po namin doon ay ipakiskis mo, baby. Salamat po, Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Speaker, rest assured that the Department of Agriculture will look into the suggestions of Congressman Dante Marcoletta. will look into the suggestions of Congressman Dante Marcoletta, ipakiskismo baby program because there will be no more traders and capitalists and so the cost trading and consolidation will of the value chain can address this gap and we can sell the rice for 35 pesos. Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable J.C. Abalos of the Porpiis Partelis for his interpolation.
The Honorable Representative Abalos of the Partelis for Peace is recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, honorable colleagues and to the Department of Agriculture family, including all its attached agencies, magandang gabi po. For my first question, Mr. Speaker, I would like to know what is the current budget allocation of NFA for buffer stocking? And what is the proposed for the year 2024?
Mr. Speaker, in 2023, the NFA has a budget of around 9 billion pesos intended for buffer stocking. And in 2024, we propose a total of 16.5 billion. However, we have been given an allocation under the net amounting only to 9 billion pesos, as same as the 2023 GA level, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, just last week, the president, as the concurrent secretary of the department, pegged the farm gate price of palay from 19 pesos to 23 pesos per kilo for dry and 19 pesos from 16 pesos per kilo for wet palay. Is this correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the additional 4 pesos has actually been implemented and we are buying now at 23 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, gusto ko pong malaman, sapat po ba ang proposed 2024 budget ng NFA para mabili ang palay ng ating mga magsasaka?
Mr. Speaker, as any other agencies, it is not enough, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, kung sakaling bibilihin po natin ang mga palay sa ganitong halaga, ang aking tanong, hindi ba rin nito maapektuhan ang retail price ng bigas na maaring maging mabigat sa mga consumer?
Hindi naman po, Mr. Speaker, hindi maapektuhan.
Mr. Speaker, isa po sa mga napakahalagang nawala sa NFA sa ilalim ng Rice Tarification Law ay ang regulatory function nito. And with the issues facing the local rice industry, 'yung hindi halos na bigilang pagtaas ng bigas sa merkado, problema sa kalidad ng mga pumapasok na imported rice dahil sa hindi maayos na issuance ng sanitary at phytosanitary import clearances, issues sa compliance ng rice labeling at iba pa. Maari bang malaman kung ano ang posisyon sa ngayon ng ahensya sa pag-aamienda ng RA 11203 para maipabalik ang functions ng NFA higit sa buffer stocking?
Mr. Speaker, we are actually, the department is actually undergoing a reviewal of the RTL, Rice Tarification Law, and we are just awaiting the recommendations for us to be able to ask Congress to repeal or amend some of the provisions there are.
Mr. Speaker, may I ask the distinguished sponsor and the department, what is the rice self-sufficiency rate of our country ever since the RTL had been enacted?
84, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask, what is the average rice self-sufficiency rate of our country from 2015 to 2018 prior to the enactment of the RTL?
Mr. Speaker, from 2015 to 2018, the number is 82.
Mr. Speaker, for my next question, ano ang total volume ng imported rice na pumasok mula January to present?
Mr. Speaker, it's 2.4 million metric tons.
Mr. Speaker, according to RA 11203, the amount in excess of 10 billion in tariff revenue shall be earmarked by Congress and included in the GAA to the following. Number one, rice farmer financial assistance. Two, titling of agricultural rice lands. Three, expanded crop insurance program on rice. Number four, crop diversification program. Magkano ang total tariff collections, including the tariff projection by the end of 2023?
Mr. Speaker, the Bureau of Customs, or BOC, has certified last September 1923 that we have an 8,181,380,624.66 has already been collected as tariff revenues from rice importation for the months of January to March 2023. And the tariff revenues from this rice importation collected for the month of April to August have yet to be certified by the Bureau of Customs, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may data po ba tayo kung ilang rice farmers ang makikinabang sa RSEF? Base sa mga perang, sa amount na naibahagi sa atin ng ating distinguished sponsor. And maari ko po ba malaman, Mr. Speaker, may data po ba tayo kung ilang rice farmers ang naka-benefit simula ng ma-implement ang RTL? At ilan ang projected beneficiaries for this year and next year?
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker.
Session is resumed.
A total of 1,919,236 unique farmers are being served as of 2021, Mr. Speaker. And the target beneficiaries for 2023 are 2,398 and 834 farmers. And we have actually 479,598 new farmers. And for 2024, we still have to have a projection for the beneficiaries, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, babalikan ko lang po, no? Nabanggit po ng ating distinguished sponsor na mas mataas ang rice self-sufficiency rate natin mula nung 2019 hanggang ngayon kumpara nung 3 years bago po natin i-enact ang Rice Tarification Law. Tama po ba 'yan, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Paano naman po, Mr. Speaker, ang ating domestic output po ng bigas? Simula nung ma-enact ang Rice Tarification Law hanggang ngayon, 2019 to 2023, kumpara nung 2015 to 2018, tumaas po ba ang ating domestic output?
Last year it was 19.7. And this year, we are actually targeting 20 million, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, 'yung tanong ko po, Mr. Speaker, no? Simula nung ma-enact ang Rice Tarification Law, ang domestic output po ba natin, ang mga palay na locally, ang mga bigas na sino-source natin locally compared sa ini-import, mas mataas po ba o mas mababa?
Mr. Speaker, the question means that if I understand correctly, mas madami pa po ang production na local production case sa import?
Yes po.
At ang, may I, may I ask again the interpolator for the question?
Mr. Speaker, 'yung sinasabi ko lang naman, no? Kung lumalakas po kasi ang ating rice self-sufficiency rate mula nung inenact natin ang RTL, maganda po sana kung magbaliktanao na lang po tayo sa batas na ito, baka pwede natin amyandahan o tingnan natin ang ating gagawin dahil kung patuloy na pautuloy ang ating pag-i-import and at the same time, pataas at pataas rin naman ang ating self-sufficiency rate, hopefully po mas tumaas 'yung share ng local production natin sa stocks na meron po tayo, Mr. Speaker. So tutuloy na lang po ako sa isa ko, sa susunod ka pong tanong, Mr. Speaker, our esteemed sponsor, could you please provide us the current statistical average age of our agricultural workforce or farmers?
The average age of the workers, 56, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, considering this relatively high average age, ano po ang mga implications nito sa ating industriya? And at the same time, in light of this data, how does the agency implement specific initiatives to tackle this issue? What strategies is the agency employing to motivate our youth towards considering agriculture as a viable and promising career choice?
Mr. Speaker, the agricultural extension workers, or AEWs, we actually have a base of 40 years old based on the Competency Needs Assessment Survey for AEWs conducted by IT last 2021. The implications and challenges that we have is to reduce agricultural productivity because of the aging farmers would have difficulty in adapting to new ways in technologies in farming. We also have the decreasing number of agricultural workforce and farmers, which are the challenges that we have and increased social economic vulnerability of rural communities as a result of outmigration and aging population. Young individuals from rural areas migrate to urban centers in search of better opportunities. But with the Agriculture Training Institute, we actually have capacity building or capability enhancement, internship programs for the youth, organic agriculture youth internship programs, Binhinang Pagasa Program, and the curriculum now of DEEPED is actually, agriculture is actually now included to hopefully increase the farmers. And also, we also have an e-extension program for agriculture and fisheries, educational assistance for youth in agriculture called the Easy Agri Program, which is now being implemented, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, gusto ko pong malaman, is it true that we are expecting a 2.3 million metric ton harvest for the month of September sa rice?
Palay. Mr. Speaker, palay po 'yun.
Yes, palay. Mr. Speaker, ayon po sa aking research, manggagaling po ang 2.3 million metric ton sa following provinces: Isabela, Kagayan, Iloilo, Nueva Ecija, North Cotobato, Leite, Oriental Mindoro, Camarines Sur, Palawan, Bukidnon, Zamboanga del Sur, at Davau del Norte. Alam naman po natin, no? Malamang po sa, nung Mayo, nagsimula ang pagtanim po ng mga palay ho na ito. At mula nung Mayo, marami pong bagyo at baha na naganap sa ibat-ibang parte ng bansa. Gusto ko pong malaman, maaral magkano po 'yung projected losses na na-incurn natin dahil sa mga dilubyo na naranasan po natin, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, 0.95%.
0.95%. Maraming salamat po, distinguished sponsor. Para sa aking susunod po natanong, Mr. Speaker, the Philippine palm oil industry roadmap from 2014 to 2023 targeted to increase the cultivation area from 56,641 hectares in 2012 to 300,000 of idle and unproductive land with more than 1 million hectares potential areas for expansion in Mindanao and Palawan. May we know, Mr. Speaker, why as of the 2022 report of PCA, the total land, the total area identified and verified is only 72,438 hectares with 9,279,938 oil palm trees planted nationwide?
Mr. Speaker, based on the PCA statistics in 2022, there are about 72,438 hectares planted with 9,000, 9,279,938 oil palm trees inspected and verified nationwide as compared to the official release of the PSA in 2022 of only about 63,380 hectares planted with 7,250,967 oil palm trees. The variance was true to the difference in sampling method used by PSA. Nevertheless, these 72,438 hectares recorded by PCA were properly verified with identified municipalities up to the barangays. The total oil palm production area may have decreased in 2022 due to the devastation brought by the typhoon Odette, particularly in Region 7, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask what happened to the 1 million hectares of potential areas for expansion? Have you identified and verified what regions or provinces these potential areas are?
Mr. Speaker, the estimated 975,300 hectares for expansion have yet to undergo site suitability assessment, and this is very important, Mr. Speaker. However, PCA has identified around 117,313 hectares suitable for oil palm farming. Available areas for expansion are located in Mindanao, among the regions, Region 12 is the biggest potential area, which is about 60% of the total prospective area for oil palm production, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, sa buong Pilipinas, may mga na-identify na po ba tayong idle land na pwede taniman at bigyan ng pangkabuhayan ang ating mga magsasaka? Dahil gusto ko rin po itanong, no, sa aking distinguished, sa ating distinguished sponsor at sa agency, magkano po ba pwede maibenta ng isang magsasaka ang isang kilo ng fresh fruit bunch?
May you repeat the question, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, gusto ko po malaman, no? Ilang ektarya po sa buong Pilipinas ay na-identify na idle at pwede taniman ng ganitong halaman po sa, ayon po sa ating roadmap? Dahil hindi po natin nasundan ang roadmap, sayang po, Mr. Speaker, ang na-allocate po natin na pera para sa roadmap kung hindi natin siya na-accomplish. Sa pagkakaalam ko po, nagkaroon po tayo ng budget cut from 100,000,000 to 79,000,000 po, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the idle land that were identified, as I mentioned earlier, is already 117,313. And these have to undergo, hectares 'yan po, verified expansion, but we can plant, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, on average, ang isang small holder, small holder oil palm grower, on average, ilang ektarya po ang meron siya?
3 to 5 hectares, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ilang palm seedlings ang magkakasya po sa isang ektarya?
138, Mr. Speaker, per hectare.
138. Is it true po, Mr. Speaker, na ang small holder oil palm grower, maari po siya mag-harvest every 15 days, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Magkano po ang isang fruit bunch kung ibebenta po niya to sa ating mga planta? At maari ko po ba malaman, underutilized po ba ang lahat ng planta natin sa buong Pilipinas pagdating sa ganitong industriya?
Mr. Speaker, the grower can earn about 129 to 160 pesos per fresh fruit bunch.
So, Mr. Speaker, so, Mr. Speaker, kung isa kang small holder ng oil palm, magkano po ang pwede mong kitain sa isang buwan kung meron kang 3 to 5 hectares? Kung tutulungan ka po ng gobyerno at bibigyan ka ng pangkabuhayan, Mr. Speaker?
On the average, it is 100,000 pesos per hectare, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, 100,000 pesos po ang pwede kitain ng magsasaka. Napakalinaw po'to na sobrang lagpas po nito sa ating poverty threshold, Mr. Speaker. Kaya nga po, gusto ko po, Mr. Speaker, i-manifest na sana mapagpatuloy po natin ang programa ito upang mayutilize natin ang ilang daang libong idle land na meron po tayo sa ating bansa, considering na underutilized pa po ang mga planta sa buong Pilipinas. Kung bibigyan po natin ng seedling at proper training ang bawat magsasaka at bibigyan po natin ng silbe ang ating mga idle land, sigurado po ako, Mr. Speaker, na maraming aachen po mula sa kahirapan. Kaya sana nga po, mapataas po natin ang budget ng PCA sa ating programa para sa oil palm, para at least po, marami po tayong mabigyan ng pangkabuhayan. Kaya muli, Mr. Speaker, that ends po my interpolation for the budget of the DAR. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We joined the Congressman J.C. Abalos in his call for an increase in budget to support po the PCA and its programs. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of the Gabriela Partelis for her interpolation. Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of the Gabriela Partelis for her interpolation.
The Honorable Brosas of the Partelis Gabriela is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, will our good sponsor yield to some questions?
With my pleasure, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first question. Sa ilalim po ng support for infrastructure projects and social programs, sa unprogrammed appropriations ng 2022, may inilaan dito na 13.19 billion? Batay sa 2024 NEP, may 13.05 billion na tintransfer sa Department of Agriculture noong 2022 sa ilalim ng programang Support for Infrastructure Projects and Social Programs, or SIP-SIP. Ibig sabihin, halos buong pondok na ina-locate sa SIP-SIP ay napunta sa DA. Noong nakaraang committee hearing, sinabi ng DA na ginamit ang 13.05 billion mula sa SIP-SIP sa 8.984 billion pesos para sa financial assistance sa rice farmers, at 4.107 billion para sa fertilizer support voucher program. Ngunit, ayon sa current operating expenditures ng SIP-SIP sa GAAA 2022, 8.5 billion ang nakalaan sa capital outlay. So, Mr. Speaker, kung sa financial assistance talaga ito inilaan, hindi ba dapat under ito ng MOOE? Maari po ba tong ipaliwanag ng ating sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, the amount that the distinguished gentlewoman is saying is actually part of the MOE. There is no capital outlay given or released for SIP-SIP program, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, walang capital outlay?
Mr. Speaker, there's no capital outlay on the SIP-SIP program, and we figure you are citing, Mr. Speaker, distinguished gentlewoman is actually part of the MOE. Because the 13 billion that you have mentioned here is actually disbursed and obligated 100%.
Mr. Speaker, ito 'yung reference ng... Suspension, Mr. Speaker. May I have a one-minute suspension para ipakita ko po kung nasaan sa GAAA 'yung binabanggit ko?
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker?
Walap. Walap.
Walang presiding. Lagi speaker.
Hindi. Bakit daw? Oo, sa kanya.
Hindi, tinambigan ko.
Oo. Oo, kasi the Office of the President nagpapa...
Session resumed. Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker?
Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, after consulting with the DBM, the amount that our distinguished gentlewoman is questioning has actually been released as MOE, and this is allowed under the general provisions of GAA, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, it is allowed? Meron po bang provision na nakasabi na pwedeng ilipat from specific provision? Sa GAA, kung saan sinasabi na it is allowed, na 'yung capital outlay can be put in the MOE?
Mr. Speaker, this under the general provisions of the GAA, it is actually a modification that is allowed, and we will provide the distinguished gentlewoman this specific provision. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if the gentlewoman will provide, Section 80 here rules on the modification on the allotment. It states here, "As general rule, departments, bureaus, and offices of the national government, including constitutional offices enjoying fiscal autonomy, and SUCs shall spend what is programmed in their respective appropriations in this act. In exceptional circumstances, agencies may modify the allotment issued within an activity or project subject to the approval of the following ensued by the timely submission of reports by all offices concerned." And there's three provisions here cited in Section 80, Mr. Speaker. And we will provide this to the good gentlewoman, Brosas.
Mr. Speaker, may we have a copy of what the sponsor is reading? Mr. Speaker, kasi ang alam namin, ang modification of allotment is allowed only within an expense class. For example, kung MOE portion of travel expenses can be shifted to utilities, pero hindi sa capital outlay.
Mr. Speaker, my colleague is actually giving you now a copy of that Section 80. And in here, there are four specific underlining... Areas where the heads of agencies of their duty authorize representatives who shall be... At the DBM, in the following modifications, from one allotment class to another, from one operating unit to another, with a special purpose fund, is included in Section 80, Mr. Speaker, letter B.
Mr. Speaker, is that another provision, Mr. Speaker?
It is the Section 80 of the same provision, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. May we have a copy na, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, we will send it to you right now.
I will go to my substantive question na, Mr. Speaker. Ilan ba talaga 'yung nabigyan ng financial assistance sa 8.98 billion? Magkano po 'yung nadisbursed sa mga rice farmers sa 2022 at 2023 excess tariff collection?
Mr. Speaker, the total number of individual farmers' number is 1,501,474, Mr. Speaker.
100?
1,501,474, Mr. Speaker. Under the 2022 figures, Mr. Speaker.
1.5, basically.
1.5. You're correct, madam.
Mr. Speaker, I'm asking this kasi nag-request kami sa Gabriela Women's Party ng report ng cash disbursement ang excess tariff, revenue sa rice farmers, at report ng 13 billion na tinransfer sa DA mula sa SIP-SIP, pero wala po kasi kaming natanggap, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, according to our reports here during the hearing, you've asked for this, and we actually have sent you a copy in your office, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, wala po kaming natanggap na... Gan'yan, Mr. Speaker. Meron po ba kayong receive copy, Mr. Speaker? Or if you have a copy right now, since you've... You're actually claiming na naipasa niyo sa amin, maaari na pa po ba kung makakuha ng kopya ngayon, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, we actually have date September 13 here. It was received, Mr. Speaker. And we will provide you with a copy, Mr. Speaker.
That is the SIP-SIP report, Mr. Speaker. Oh, I remember, Mr. Speaker, sa tinanong ko yan isa-isa, saan napunta? Anong mga regions? Ilang farmers ang nakinabang, Mr. Speaker, kaya...
Mr. Speaker, in your office, actually Manuel Buena has received the copy. And... So you have a receiving copy, Miss, Madam Interpolator?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is the copy, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, and the, Mr. Speaker, we are actually showing you that you have someone who has already received that copy in your office.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will go on to my next question. Sabi ng, Mr. Speaker, sabi ng staff ko, wala doon ang SIP-SIP report sa iba nilang pinasa. You have given us, pero hindi itong particular na ito, Mr. Speaker?
My apologies, my apologies, Mr. Speaker. But I think we have already complied with that before, and I don't know. I will find out how it... It is not in your office or it was given to someone else, but...
Okay. Mr. Speaker, my next question is, ano ang legal basis ng paglalaan ng 4.107 billion mula sa excess tariff para sa fertilizer support voucher program, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, we did not allocate any money for the, from the excess tariff.
Sa excess tariff, Mr. Speaker, eto 'yung sinabi ninyo last time, di ba? Noong tinanong ko, out of the 13 billion, 4.107 billion nilagay sa fertilizer support voucher program?
Mr. Speaker, sa SIP-SIP fund po yun?
Yes, itong SIP-SIP fund na ito, alin dito ang, di ba 'yung 8.5 ay financial assistance, right? Et o yun?
8.9 po ang RFA, and FDV is 4.1 billion. Fully obligated po siya by December 31.
So, Mr. Speaker, itong pinag-uusapan natin na 4.107 billion, wala to?
Speaker, if you are referring to the SIP-SIP program of 4.1 billion sa FDV, andyan po, fully obligated po.
So, Mr. Speaker, 'yung 4.1, anong pinagkagastosan dito?
Mr. Speaker, the 4.1 billion, gastos po dyan FDV, and this is unprogrammed sa GAA, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi po ito ginastos para sa... Fertilizer?
Mr. Speaker, that 4.1 billion is the fertilizer FDV.
Oh, nga, Mr. Speaker. Ang tinatanong ko po dyan ay, ano ang legal basis sa paglalaan ng 4.107 billion mula sa excess tariff para sa fertilizer support voucher program?
Mr. Speaker, this is not an excess fund. It is programmed with the GAA, so it cannot be an excess.
So, regular?
Regular program to. Unprogrammed, regular GAA, but regular po siya.
Galing siya sa excess revenue, pero hindi siya galing dun sa...
Mr. Speaker, unprogrammed. It's not coming from the excess revenue, Mr. Speaker.
Oh nga, Mr. Speaker. Ayon sa Section 13 ng RA 11203 o RLL, ilalaan ang excess tariff revenues sa rice farmer financial assistance, di ba? For providing direct financial assistance to rice farmers who are farming 2 hectares and below. Tama po ba, Mr. Speaker? Tapos, ginawa natin... Inambiyendahan 'yung RA 11598, di ba? Kaya lahat ng excess revenue ay for cash assistance na. So, for cash assistance for farmers. Wala po sa mga provision na ito ang paglalaan ng excess tariff revenue para sa fertilizer?
Tama po, Mr. Speaker. Kaya ito 4.1 billion is not from the excess tariff, Mr. Speaker.
So, it came from the excess revenues, hindi sa excess tariff?
No, it came from the unprogrammed General Appropriations Act. No, it came from the unprogrammed General Appropriations Act. It did not come from the excess tariff.
Okay. So excess revenue, hindi siya excess revenue sa rice imports?
Hindi po, Mr. Speaker.
So saan siyang galing na revenues, Mr. Speaker?
Sa GAAPo, unprogrammed GAAP. We appropriated 4.1 billion for FDV, which is the fertilizer, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Nililinaw ko lang po, kasi bawal nga yun. Kung galing sa, sa tariff, diba? Ang gusto sana natin, diretso sa, um, magsasaka as rice, uh, as, uh, assistance, no? Cash assistance to farmers.
We agree, Mr. Speaker.
Anyway, Mr. Speaker, sa next question ko po, halos isang buwan pagkatapos pirmanan ng presidente, ang memorandum order number 65, Series of 2022, noong October 17, 2022, kung saan inilaan ang 4.1 billion mula sa... Sabi niyo kanina, hindi na tariff, diba? Revenues lang. Di natin alam kung saang revenue galing, basta revenues. Uh, non-tax ba siya? Uh, ano ba siya? Uh, excess, uh... Galing saan? Uh, new additional taxes ba galing? Foreign loans ba galing? Itong 4.1 billion na ito?
Again, Madam, uh, Mr. Speaker, the 4.1 billion is not from revenues. It is from the GAA, so... Hindi ho ito bawal gastusin, kasi hindi ho nanggaling sa tariff.
So, uh, Mr. Speaker, itong 4.1 billion na sinasabi natin for fertilizer, um... Siya ba ay, eto ba 'yung sa MOA with China para sa fertilizer? Tama ba na mula sa China ang fertilizer na binili gamit 'yung 4.1 billion, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, it's not true. 'Yung sa China po ay donation, hindi po nanggaling sa China yun.
Ano?
Hindi po ho nanggaling sa China, Mr. Speaker. 'Yung China na binigay po sa atin ay donation coming from the Republic.
Donation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
But we have references here, Mr. Speaker. 'Yung Department of Agriculture and the Philippine International Trading Corporation, PITC, are set to sign this week a memorandum of agreement to source affordable fertilizers from China. So ano to? Hindi natin binili?
Mr. Speaker, that particular...
A statement din po kayo, PITC was stopped to import and required volume of fertilizer at a lower cost through government-to-government arrangement. With a 4.1 billion fund, the DA will be able to buy about 2.277 million bags of urea to be given in kind to farmers, November 11 po yan. President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. secured business agreements with China to lower the prices of fertilizer, a vital part of his administration's bid to help farmers ensure food security. PIA, Philippine Information Agency, January 7, 2023, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the, there was no MOA. That's why the program has been scratched. And, uh, this is the one that's coming from the DA, Mr. Speaker. So that program is scratched.
Scratched, Mr. Speaker? Ibig sabihin...
Wala po. Scrap. Hindi ho nangyari, kasi wala ho ang, uh, MOA.
So, Mr. Speaker, saan napunta 'yung 4.1 billion?
Mr. Speaker, 'yung GAA again, we go back. Yun po 'yung vouchers na binibigay natin. That's what we call the Fertilizer Support Voucher Program for Rice, which amounts to 4.1 billion.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, saan nga napunta 'yung 4.1 billion?
Sa production po, in support of DA's catch-up and mitigation plan to sustain food production po. Uh, the program is for rice, Mr. Speaker.
But not in the fertilizer?
It is actually a Fertilizer Support Voucher Program for Rice, so it is for a fertilizer. Binili po ng fertilizer to 4.1, and sa ganun, makagaroon ng support ang Department of Agriculture's catch-up and mitigation plan to sustain food production, Mr. Speaker.
Fertilizer, Mr. Speaker, na hindi sourced sa China, tama ba, Mr. Speaker?
No, Mr. Speaker. This is the GAA fund that has been given. Naulit ko po, 'yung sa PITC na binabanggit po niyo, dahil walang MOA, ay hindi po natuloy. Therefore, ang ginamit po dito sa 4.1 ay unprogrammed money po coming from the GAA, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi ko pa rin mag-yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ang tinatanong ko po, saan napunta pinagkagastusan ng 4.1 billion? Kasi sabi niyo, na-scrap 'yung MOA, eh, Mr. Speaker, diba? So, po na-scrap 'yung MOA, hindi nagtuloy, hindi napunta, 'yung 4.1 billion sa fertilizer. Tapos, ngayon, saan napunta 'yung 4.1 billion, Mr. Speaker? Yun 'yung tanong ko. Yun 'yung sinasabi niyo sa akin, ang sagot niyo, GAA funded ito, et cetera. Pero saan nga napunta 'yung 4.1 billion?
Okay, Mr. Speaker, we have actually 1,071,584 farmers that benefited for this 4.1, uh, obligation incurred, and it's 100% po. These are Fertilizer Support Vouchers for 1,071,584 farmers, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, again, question, 'yung fertilizer support na ito, diba, binigay sa mga farmers? Saan si Norse ng mga farmers, 'yung mga fertilizer? Yun ang tanong ko, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, yun po 'yung vouchers na pinangamitan itong 4.1 billion.
Oo nga. Ibig sabihin, local ba nila si Norse? Na sa iyo 'yung voucher, bibili ko yan ng fertilizer. Kung ibibili ko yan ako magsasaka, bibili ko yan ng fertilizer. Kung bibili ko yan ng fertilizer, saan si Norse 'yung fertilizer na yun, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, sa mga lahat ng retailers, atsaka sa lahat ng bebenta, dun po napunta 'yung mga vouchers, para may pabigay po dun sa, uh, mga farmers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So local siya, kung saan sila makakasource ng fertilizer, ganun. Ang nangyari, naging voucher siya na ibinigay sa magsasaka, magsasaka bibili ng fertilizer kung saan man niya gusto or sa local.
That is correct, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Pero itong MOA with PITC, DA, wala na to, kasi hindi ito nagtuloy.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ayon sa Section 3 ng RA number 1159A, o ang Cash Assistance for Filipino Farmers Act na pinirmahan noong December 10, 2021, ang excess tariff revenue ay directly ibibigay as cash assistance, diba, sa rice farmers? Mandated ang VOC na directly irremit ang excess funds sa DA. Tama ba?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
May excess funds ba ang rice tariff?
Meron po, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, saan napunta yun?
12.7 billion.
Ano, magkano ang binalik sa, binalik na excess tariff revenue sa Bureau of Treasury, tama ba? Dahil ibabalik yun eh.
On 2022, there's 12,795,669,158 that was collected in excess tariffs, Mr. Speaker.
So magkano po 'yung binalik sa collected?
Wala ho binalek. This is remitted to the Department of Agriculture.
Saan napunta, Mr. Speaker? 'Yung 12 million. Excess to ha, excess, Mr. Speaker, kasi automatic naman 'yung 10.
Mr. Speaker, it's lodged with the DBM, and it hasn't been allocated, Mr. Speaker.
So wala pa? Hindi pa rin naa-access ng mga magsasaka?
Mr. Speaker, the Department of Agriculture has requested the release so that we can actually disburs this fund as soon as possible.
Kailan, Mr. Speaker?
We will inquire with the DBM, because we have already requested this for a longest time, and we will follow up our request with the DBM, Mr. Speaker.
When, when, Mr. Speaker, when was the time na narequeste ito? Particularly ng DA?
Mr. Speaker, we have consulted with the president, and we are actually waiting for the release anytime. And we will, uh, let you know as soon as possible when this fund will be released, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, kailangan-kailangan po ito ng ating mga magsasaka, no? At gusto po sana natin direktang maibigay sa mga magsasaka ang cash assistance na ito, para kahit papaano, makatulong sa kanila, lalong-lalo na sa epekto ng Rice Liberalization Law. Uh, hindi po natin gusto, no, na naibabalik to ng hindi talaga napapakinabangan, no? Narremit sa, sa ano, hindi napapakinabangan ng mga magsasaka. Tapos, uh, napakaraming mga nangyari, no, nag, uh, nagbagyo at baha at kung ano-ano pa. Tapos, meron pala tayong ganito kalaki na excess, uh, tariff revenues supposedly for financial assistance, direktang maibibigay sa mga magsasaka, hindi nila magamit, Mr. Speaker, no? Uh, so, Mr. Speaker, ngayon naman, merong 50.03 billion na ilalaan sa strengthening assistance for government infrastructure and social programs. 'Yung dating SIP-SIP, eto namang ngayon sa 2024, tama ba, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Madam Speaker, you're right.
Mr. Speaker, itong programa na naman na ito, Mr. Speaker. Ayaw natin, ano, na hindi direktang makinabang talaga 'yung mga magsasaka. 'Yung excess tariff revenues, sana, uh, mas secure talaga natin na maibigay ito sa ating mga magsasaka direktang mapakinabangan. Sa halip na paikutikutin natin, mas mainam po, no, na talagang, 'yung... Kasi matagal na po naming panawagan ito, no, 'yung Rice Liberalization Law, na maibasura ito, kasi nagsasuffer talaga 'yung mga rice farmers natin ngayon dahil dyan, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, this excess tariff revenue is quacteded, and I agree with the, uh, the Interpolator, the good gentlewoman. Uh, but, uh, all agencies po, and this is attributed to the SIP-SIP, amounting for 50 billion, 33,000, uh, 33,172,000, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, 'yung excess revenue, magto 2024 na tariff revenues, magto 2024 na, 2022 pa 'yung pinag-uusapan natin, Mr. Speaker, diba? Hindi pa rin yun na ibibigay fully sa ating mga magsasaka, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, because, uh, like the 2022, um, excess tariff that was collected, it was only reported recently, and that's one of the reasons why the department has yet to, um, promulgate a program to use this so that it will benefit, uh, the farmers immediately, Mr. Speaker.
Yun lang, Mr. Speaker, ano, ang lakas-lakas nating magpa-green lane para sa mga imported na bigas, no? Importers ang nakikinabang, traders ang nakakubikita. Pero, Mr. Speaker, tinanong naman, pagbibigay lang nung, uh, excess revenues para sa excess tariff revenues ng rice, hindi natin maibigay sa mga magsasaka, Mr. Speaker? Anyway, Mr. Speaker, kaugnay sa NFA naman tayo mag-usap, Mr. Speaker.
With the permission of our colleagues, the gentle lady has two and a half more minutes.
Talawa na lang?
Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, marami pa akong tanong. Mr. Speaker, uh, sinabi nung nakaraan ni President Marcos Jr. na in response to the changing production and market conditions, tataasan ng NFA ang buying price ng palay, 16 pesos to 19 pesos per kilo sa fresh wet palay, at 19 to 23 pesos per kilo ng clean at dry palay. Mula ito sa 16 to 19 pesos per kilo maging wet o dry palay man. Kailan ito umpisahan ng NFA, at kailan, hanggang kailan ito, ilang metric tons ang target na bilhin ng NFAs a new buying price of palay, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, 642,000 na po ang catch-up plan, and that is true that there is a 4 peso price increase for the purchase of the dry rice, uh, making it, uh, 23 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Alam niyo, Mr. Speaker, matagal na naming pinapanawagan, ano, sa Gabriela Women's Party, kasama ang sektor ng agriculture, na itaas ang presyo ng pagbili ng NFA ng palay, at bilhin ng 20% ng local palay production ng ating mga magsasaka. In fact, nung mga nakaraang budget, nung nakaraang taon, palagi kami naghaain ng resolusyon para taasan ng budget ng NFA. Kasabay nito, dapat itaas ang volume ng binibiling palay, at hindi lang para sa buffer stocking. Kasi ngayon, ganyan-yan eh, dahil 'yan sa Rice Liberalization Law, at ibalik ang murang bigas ng NFA sa mga merkado. Dapat isuspend or ibasura ang Rice Liberali, Rice Liberalization Law para maibalik ang regulatory and trading functions ng NFA. Uh, Mr. Speaker, actually, may House resolution po kami, joint resolution kami tungkol dito. But anyway, Mr. Speaker, last na lang, sa 0% rice import tariff, Mr. Speaker, kasi sinabi to ng DOF, may proposal sila to reduce rice import tariff from 35% to 0%. Eh, hindi na nga natin mabigay sa mga magsasaka 'yung excess revenues, tariff revenues ngayon? Eto na naman, 0% tariff, ano na lang magyayari sa mga magsasaka natin, Mr. Speaker? Anong implikasyon sa kanila ng pagbaba ng tarifa sa RCEP at ang Rice Farmer Financial Assistance under dito sa RLL? Saan nga ang cash assistance nila? 0% tariff, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, uh, the department actually does not support a 0% tariff, uh, and, uh, that is the position of, uh, the president, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Ah, buti naman, Mr. Speaker, ano, does not support. Uh, sa plano po kasi na ito ng DOF, patuloy na importasyon ng DA, mas lalong babaha ang imported na biga sa ating bansa. Mas papabura ng ganitong solusyon ng gobyerno, ang rice importers at malalaking trader, habang ang ating magsasaka mapipilitang babaan na naman, ang babaan ang presyo ng kanilang mga palay. Alam niyo po, mamamatay na ang lokal na industriya natin ng biga sa, ng biga sa bansa na ito kapagka ganyan tayo. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, sponsor.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Gabriel Bordado of the Third District of Cabarinur Sur for his interpretation.
The Honorable Bordado is recognized to interpolate the sponsor. Please proceed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, smaller farms are sometimes assumed to be more productive, but this assumption has been virtually junk. Mr. Sponsor, how do you plan to optimize farm sizes and organizational models to enhance productivity while benefiting both farmers and private investors?
Mr. Speaker, the Department of Agriculture implements the Farmers and Fisher Folk Clustering and Consolidation Program, which is called F2C2, which seeks to advance the interest of Filipino smallholder farmers and fisher folk by encouraging them to adopt the strategy of clustering and consolidation using a value chain approach to include production, processing, marketing activities as community enterprises, which would entail pooling of assets, labor, and other resources to take advantage of economic, of the, what we call, the economies of scale. In addition to optimize farm sizes and income, diversification of farms through combining other crops and/or integrating livestock and poultry is being promoted among farmers and even fisher folk through aquaculture farming, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Mr. Speaker, there is this question. Why do we import rice? And why we can't, we produce enough of our staple food ourselves? And the answer, according to the Food and Agricultural Organization, the FAO, is geography. The Philippines is a nation of islands without any major river deltas like those in Thailand and Vietnam. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, do you agree with this proposition?
Yes, we agree, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker, we agree.
You, you agree? So in other words, we will be abandoning rice production?
On the contrary, no, Mr. Speaker. May you propound your question, Mr. Speaker, so that we can...
Can you elaborate on your, uh, answer?
May you repeat the question, Mr. Speaker, so we can elaborate further?
Mr. Speaker, let me repeat the question. Mr. Speaker, let me repeat the question. This is not actually my question. This was posed by experts from FAO. And the question is, why do we import rice? And why can't we produce enough of our staple food ourselves? And the answer is geography. The Philippines is a nation of islands without any major river deltas like those in Thailand and Vietnam, according to the Food and Agriculture Organization of the United Nations. So, do you agree, Mr. Sponsor?
Yes, we agree, Mr. Speaker, with the geographic challenges that you have mentioned. In fact, we are... but, of course, we are addressing the increase in our production through climate change resiliency program and other programs lodged in the Department of Agriculture, Mr. Speaker.
You mean, we are now addressing the...
Yes, Mr. Speaker. We are addressing all the problems, and the Department of Agriculture's aim and goal has been reiterated before, is to increase the production through various programs, Mr. Speaker.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Uh, Mr. Speaker, scaling up the agricultural sector through private investments requires a business-friendly environment. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, what specific policies or incentives will you introduce to attract both the local and foreign investors to participate in the revitalization of the agricultural sector?
Mr. Speaker, the National Priority Plan, which is the NPP, is a list of government priority programs, projects and activities in the areas of education, health, youth, and sports development, human settlement, science and culture, and economic development, which are entitled to tax deductibility by NEDA. This is one way to entice the private sector to engage and increase their investments in the agriculture fisheries sector. The NPP is pursuant to Section 34, Mr. Speaker, of the National Internal Code. Thus, the donor donations to PPAs in the NPP shall be eligible for full tax deduction. I guess that is an incentive. For 2022, the DA endorsed two PPAs in the NPP, i.e. the Philippine Rural Development Project, or PRDP, and soil rejuvenation and fertilization of sugarcane farms with low productivity. Further, pursuant to RA11534, or the Corporate Recovery and Tax Incentive for Enterprises Act, which provides tax incentives or tax holidays to the private sector, agencies are now mandated to formulate strategic investment priority plans. For 2023, Mr. Speaker, the DA has already endorsed 12 projects under the SIPP, mostly for the construction of cold storages nationwide to the Board of Investments under Tier 2, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Uh, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, again, what is your stand on the proposal to bring down the tariffs on rice?
We do not support that measure, Mr. Speaker.
How is that again?
We do not support the devaluation or decreasing of the tariffs, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, you do not support that position?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Why?
Mr. Speaker, will impact our local farmers coming from the province of Isabela, which is one of the biggest rice farmers in the Philippines. That would help my district and all the other districts that produce rice. And therefore, if it affects the production of rice because importation is cheaper now, then it will hurt the farmers, Mr. Speaker. So, the Department of Agriculture does not support the reduction in tariffs, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sponsor. Mr. Speaker, again, Mr. Sponsor, how do you plan to ensure that government investments are effectively utilized to enhance agricultural productivity and support farmer beneficiaries?
Mr. Speaker, the DA uses local plans or provincial commodity investment plans, regional priorities in the NAFMIP and others as key references in crafting project proposals to ensure that interventions are well-planned and targeted to the needs of the beneficiaries. Additionally, Mr. Speaker, the department strengthens its results-based monitoring and evaluation, or what we call the RBME, in agri-fishery programs to improve delivery of services and support evidence-based policymaking, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Sponsor. By the way, Mr. Speaker, I commend the vehicle regional office of the Department of Agriculture headed by Director Rodel Tornilia. Mr. Speaker, uh, Mr. Sponsor, the history of land reform in the Philippines highlights the complexity of balancing social justice and economic productivity. How will you collaborate with stakeholders, including farmers, private sector, and experts to formulate a comprehensive and viable plan for the revitalization of the agricultural sector?
Mr. Speaker, with the... This question is better defended by the Department of Agrarian Reform because this is the Department of Agriculture, Mr. Speaker. And with my colleagues' respect, the DAR is in a better position to answer that question, Mr. Speaker, not the DA.
But, Mr. Speaker, this can also be answered by the Department of Agriculture?
Well, Mr. Speaker, the collaboration is always there with the Department of Agrarian Reform. We provide all these services that we've already enumerated in these budget proposals. We have for other farmers, particularly with the rice, we have the Rice Tarification Law, the RCEF. We have the funding for, of course, support services for the fertilizers. We also have other support services that we've already talked about. But as far as the land reform of the Philippines with the complexity of their social justice concern, the Department of Agrarian Reform is in a better position to respond to that question, Mr. Speaker.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Uh, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, is the Agricultural Credit Policy Council still doing well?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it's doing well.
Can you cite some statistics? Mr. Speaker, I'm actually interested in this particular issue because the Agricultural Credit Policy Council specifically targets the small farmers. And I was once an employee of the ACPC.
Mr. Speaker, the ongoing programs that the gentleman is asking about is the AgriNegotia Program, which the amount of loans releases is already in 4,619,141...
How much?
That is only for AgriNegotia Program. The Agripreneurs Program, uh, there is already a amount that the loan released is already 158,975,717. The Sure Programs po, ang total po ng Sure Programs that has been released is 1,241,95272. And the Bayanihan Program, 400 million. Alert Arbo Program, 51 million. Plus-plus, Sikatsaka Program is actually 15,702,813,000.
So in other words, Mr. Speaker, the Agricultural Credit Policy Council is still doing well?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor.
Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Raoul Daniel Manuel of the Kabataan Partilis for his interpolation.
The Honorable Manuel of the Partilis Kabataan is recognized to interpolate the sponsor of the Agriculture Department.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the sponsor yield to questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Una po, Mr. Speaker, meron bang mga programa ang DA na in line sa National Task Force Elkhak?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ano-ano po ang mga programa na iyon, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, all the programs, 4,000 in numbering, 51 barangays. 4,051 barangays. Nationwide, Mr. Speaker.
Ano-ano pong program sa iyon, Mr. Speaker? Yan po ba ihiwalay pa sa barangay development program whose budget is lodged under DILG?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is particularly just for the Department of Agriculture.
We ask the sponsor, Mr. Speaker, to cite what are those programs at magkano po ang budget para sa mga programang iyon?
One-minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker.
Session is resumed.
The support services for Elkhak is broken down as follows. For the RFFA, the amount given is 12.7 billion. For the SAAD program, there's actually two. One is 1 billion, and the BIFAR SAAD is 586 million. And for the 4K, Sir Katutubos, is 210 million, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, para sa aling taon po ang mga nabanggit na amount?
Mr. Speaker, this is for the fiscal year 2024.
2024. How about for this year, Mr. Speaker? 2023?
Mr. Speaker, for 2023, the kabuhayan at kundaran ng kababayan Katutubo 4K projects is 150 million. The Special Areas for Agricultural Development, or SAAD, Phase 2 is 725,401,000. And the SAAD Phase 2 for agricultural development also, for the Bureau of Fisheries and Quaternary Resources, or BIFAR, is 486,750, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, 'yung nabanggit na RFFA, 12.7, is that 12.7 million?
Billion, Mr. Speaker.
Billion?
But, Mr. Speaker, that is for the whole country, and this is just... Elkhak is just a part of the funding for the RFFA's 12.7 billion, Mr. Speaker.
Million, like letter M?
B.
B, billion, okay.
Letter B.
Pero for 2023, Mr. Speaker, walang ganito kalaking amount. So bago po ito for 2024?
Mr. Speaker, I stand corrected, this is actually the 2023. And this is the figure for 2023, and it should be the same for 2024. Maybe a little lesser, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, are we referring to the first set of figures or your second set?
One-minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker.
Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, the correction is that RFFA is actually collected for 2023, and that is the amount of 12.7 billion. However, for the 2024, we cannot predict yet what the collection would be, but we estimate it to be the same or slightly lower, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ang RFFA, ito ba ay assistance, ito ba ay cash na binibigay sa mga beneficiaries?
Mr. Speaker, this is given in cash.
Okay, so again, Mr. Speaker, to clarify, merong 12.7 billion RFFA for 2023, at meron ding ganong proposal for 2024?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, ang mga beneficiaries ba nito ay mga former rebel surrenderes?
Mr. Speaker, the rebel returnees are included in this. This is kabuoan po ng ating rice farmers throughout the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, haloan po ito? Eh, di farmers in general, tas kasama din dyan ang mga nasalistahan ng mga former rebel surrenderes? Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, sa mga beneficiaries ng mga former rebel surrenderes, ang nagbigay ba ng listahan ng beneficiaries ay NTFLK?
Mr. Speaker, we have a registry system called RSBSA. That is where we base the RFFA disbursements po, Mr. Speaker, of this 12.7 billion.
Sige. Kasi, Mr. Speaker, sa ibang mga ahensya na nagbibigay din ng assistance in line with objectives of NTFLK, ang nagbibigay ng listahan ng beneficiaries ay mismo 'yung NTFLK. So in this case po ba, meron ba ditong mga programa na NTFLK ang nag-iendorse ng list of beneficiaries?
Mr. Speaker, as I've said, there's none because this is based specifically for RFFA, which is the total number of farmers in the Philippines. which is the total number of farmers in the Philippines, just as they are registered in this registry, Mr. Speaker.
Duly noted, Mr. Speaker. Kasunod po ay questions addressed to the Bifar, Mr. Speaker. Una po about its aquaculture subprogram worth 1.5 billion pesos, Mr. Speaker. Nice po nating itanong bakit ganito kalaki ang budget for aquaculture gayong mas nangangailangan ng suporta ang capture fisheries, na nilaanan lamang ng mababang pondo, that's 300 million pesos. So parang times five po ang budget for aquaculture kesa capture fisheries. Mas priority po ba ng Bifar ang pagpapaunlad at pagpapalaganap ng aquaculture kesa ang tradisyonal na capture fishing? Na sa capture fishing po employed dito ay 3 million na mga mangingsda?
Mr. Speaker, mas madami po kasi dito sa operation of legislative catcheries po. Dyan po na kalagay 'yung pondo po, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, sapat po ba na dahilan iyan para times five po ang pondo ng aquaculture kesa traditional capture fishing?
Mr. Speaker, so that we can have adequate fish supply, we need hatcheries. And this is why we need production and distribution of bagus program. Hatcheries po worth 117 million. Operation management of production facilities, which is 42 million, ang heap-on program, ay kailangan po natin ito kasi food production po ng Pilipinas ay very low in this area. And this is the priority of the Department of Agriculture to increase the hatcheries, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, tungkol naman sa pagrehabilitate at pagrestore ng declared aquatic critical areas. Kasi po, Mr. Speaker, pang limang taon na zero ang budget para sa programang ito. Nung 2018 pa ay may inilaan dito pero 50 million lamang. Can the sponsor confirm?
'Yung Fish Corps program po, meron po tayo.
Pero in particular, Mr. Speaker, sa rehab and restoration of declared aquatic critical areas.
Kasama po, sa Fish Corps project po yun, 1.5 billion.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, ano po ang mga particular na programa ng Bifar? Pagdating sa ating mga declared aquatic critical areas, kasi po ang na-mention ay kasama lang siya eh. Pero ang gusto po nating tingnan ay 'yung para talaga specific doon sa mga critical areas.
Mr. Speaker, kailangan, kasama na po 'yung fishery law enforcement natin para sa ganun hindi magalaw itong mga areas na sinasabi nating critical po for fish fries, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, tungkol naman sa development ng ating salt industry, 100 million pesos. Mr. Speaker, kung 100 million pesos nga, ang baba po kasi noon, Mr. Speaker. Lalo na ayaw natin na magre-lay tayo sa pagimport ng asin eh tayo din naman ay isang archipelagic country na papaligiran tayo ng maraming salt water, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the Salt Industry Development Act of 2023, the budget is correct, is 100 million. And the utilization of this is 40 trainings conducted already, 11 techno demo distributed. And we have actually 342 post-harvest equipment that has also been distributed in regions 1, 6, and 9. In fact, in region 9, it's an ongoing validation. But the production in metric tons in region 1 is 62.155 metric tons. And in region 6, it's 614.595 metric tons, Mr. Speaker. And the beneficiaries are 211 individuals and 40 groups, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, sapat na po ba ang pondo na iyan? At bukas ba 'yung ating sponsor na mag-gumit na taasan pa natin ang pondo for that? Lalo na po't critical na ang sitwasyon ng salt industry sa Pilipinas. Gusto po nating maibalik ang mga dating, 'yung mga baybaying dagat natin na merong mga nagpa-process dyan ng asin. Tapos, Mr. Speaker, sana masuportahan ang mga mangingsda na direktang kalahok sa produksyon ng asin.
Mr. Speaker, the proposal of the Department of Agriculture is actually 200 million. But again, DPM restrictions put us as 100 million. Eh tama po kayo, kulang na kulang po at hindi sapat ito. At gusto po natin dagdagan ito para sa ganun matulungan natin 'yung mga fisher folks.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, next po, still on Bifar, the Philippine Fisheries and Coastal Resiliency Project or ang Fish Corps, 1.5 billion. Nice lang po nating malaman, Mr. Speaker, ano-ano ang nilalaman ng proyektong ito? At paano po makikinabang ang maliliit na mangingsda natin?
Mr. Speaker, the first component of that would be coastal resiliency. Second is the empowerment of livelihood of fisher folks. And the third is the administration, Mr. Speaker. That is the totality of the Fish Corps project and its budget, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, duly noted, Mr. Speaker. Ito naman po, Mr. Speaker, isang local na issue sa Guba't Sorosogon. Mr. Speaker, aware po bang ating sponsor sa Fisheries Administrative Order 264, series of 2020?
Mr. Speaker, there's already a technical review of that. And ongoing po ang validation and amendments. And we will provide you the necessary documents regarding this matter, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, we note that, Mr. Speaker, dahil nagpapabot po ang ating mga crablet gatherers and fishers, lalo na ang mga nasa mud crab-rich area itong Guba't Sorosogon. Dahil po naapektuhan ang kanilang kabuhayan dahil sa administrative order na ito. Ang gusto lang naman po nila ay okay namang nagre-regulate tayo ng paano 'yung selling, trading, pagtransport ng mga mangrove crablets, pero hindi to the point na namamatay ang kanilang kabuhayan. So, Mr. Speaker, would that process help para finally ay mapayagan na pong magcatch, magtransport, magbenta ng mangrove crablets ang ating mga fisher folk sa Sorosogon?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. In fact, it is reported to this sponsor that next month, October, this shall be passed, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, magiging bahagi din po ba ng ating mga hakbang? Moving forward, ay partnership din sa mga local organizations para sa tuloy-tuloy na research tsaka development ng quality crablets sa bayan ng Guba't Sorosogon?
Definitely, Mr. Speaker.
And, Mr. Speaker, pati din sa long overdue recommendation ng mga mud crab fishers na mag-establish ng mud crab sanctuary sa coastal mangrove areas?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is understudy and for sure po, kasama ito, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, duly noted, Mr. Speaker. Ito naman po tungkol sa sugar. Mr. Speaker, we'd like to ask, lalo na sa SRA, Mr. Speaker, ano ang mga naging hakbang ng ahensya patungkol sa nangyari sa CADB? Natanong din natin ito, Mr. Speaker, sa committee level, pero dahil major issue po ito and hindi lang local ang significance nito pero pambansa. Mr. Speaker, ano ang mga naprovide na tulong, financial or material sa mga field sugar workers, small sugar planters, at sa mga truck driver na nagtatransport ng sugar papunta sa mga mills? Nung nagsarap po ang CADB sa Batangas?
Mr. Speaker, um, we have conducted regular meetings with URC Sugar Mills and Bioethanol Distilleries. We also coordinated with LGUs and other agencies such as DOL and SDWD for possible assistance to affected farmers. Conducted dialogue with affected sugarcane farmers such as for the needs assessment. And we coordinated with owners of hauling logistics such as mail district development councils and planters and associations, cooperatives to accommodate requests of affected small sugarcane farmers for hauling logistics. We also allocated a budget amounting to 2.5 million for the initial distribution of relief assistance to affected sugarcane farmers. And the distribution of food packs started in August 15, 2023 and is ongoing, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we request through the sponsor unofficial copy of the report ng mga nag-iaksyon ng SRA at maging na DA na rin?
With pleasure, Mr. Speaker, we will submit soonest.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Tungkol naman sa supply ng azukal, Mr. Speaker, we'd like to ask for an explanation bakit kahit nagkaroon na ng tatlong sugar orders, sugar order 2, 6, and 7, ang total pong na-import na ng ating bansa ay 740,000 metric tons of refined sugar? Tapos, Mr. Speaker, ang effect po ng importation eh tumaas ang ating total physical refined stock to around 200%, no? Ibi sabihin parang nag-triple na ang supply natin ng azukal, Mr. Speaker. And still, as of, sabi natin nung August 6, 2023, ang presyo pa rin ng refined sugar, Mr. Speaker, ay napakamahal at 105 pesos per kilo. So kahit po nag-import na tayo ng napakalaking volume, hindi naman ito napababa significantly ang presyo ng azukal. Ano po ang komento ng sponsor doon?
Mr. Speaker, we confirm that the refined retail in Napalengke is at around 84 to 85 pesos and in the supermarket is around 100 to 110, depending on the brand, Mr. Speaker. Uh, but the farm grade has dropped, prices has dropped from 70 to 60 pesos in February and maintained 60 pesos until August. The September farm gate price is at 54 pesos. And the wholesale refined imported local mix is at 64 to 65 pesos. And the retail has remained at 85 to 110 since February. However, wholesale and retail prices, Mr. Speaker, are retail or trade controlled. So with intervention, we can only do as much because this is out of the hands of the sugar regulatory.
Mr. Speaker, nakalkulate din po ba ng SRA at ng DA ang net earnings ng mga sugar importers? Kasi po, Mr. Speaker, kung ang export price ng Thai sugar, kung saan po tayo madalas kumukuha ng ating imports, 30 pesos per kilo lang po if converted ang presyo. Pero pag binenta na po wholesale sa atin, ay umaabot na po ng 4,400 pesos per bag na ang laman po ay 50 kilos. So kung iddivide po natin yan, ang 4,400 divided by 50, nasa 80 plus pesos per kilo po, Mr. Speaker. So ang laki ng depenysya from 30 pesos per kilo up to 80 plus per kilo. So nasasama din ba at nakocompute din ba ng SRA o ng DA, magkano na 'yung earnings ng mga sugar importer?
Mr. Speaker, uh, the local price is actually 4,000. And the imported rice actually is calculated at 66 pesos or what we call 3,300 pesos. So the imported price po is mas mura. And the chain is the importer-wholesaler repacker-retailer before the sugar reaches the consumer. Uh, ito po, the cost per chain adds up, thus retail price per kilogram in the market ranges from 85 to 110 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, ito naman po, uh, patungkol sa mga importers mismo. Inamin po ng DA na merong sugar importation through selected importers. Pero, Mr. Speaker, ang hindi inaamin ng DA on record ay ano ang mga dahilan? Bakit merong mga selected importers at paano napili ang selected importers na ito? Merong tatlo, Mr. Speaker, All Asian Counter Trade Incorporated, pangalawa, Sockden Philippines, at pangatlo, Edison Lee Marketing Corporation. Mr. Speaker, ano po ang komento ng sponsor? Bakit may selected importers at paano sila napili?
Mr. Speaker, this is based on SO6, which the selected ones are the cheapest ones that can import sugar and therefore that is the criteria of the selection, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, ano naman ang batayan ng latest na volume ng i-import nating azukal? Uh, how many metric tons po iyon, Mr. Speaker? Tama po ba 150,000 metric tons?
Mr. Speaker, there's no importation because we plan to harvest.
'Yung latest po, Mr. Speaker?
This is 150, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, ano po ang basis ng 150,000? Batay ba ito sa inventory ng local supply natin? Na-incorporate po ba ang timing based din sa anihan ng azukal sa ating bansa?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, as of May 16, 2023, we have a clearance, issue clearance of, actually the sugar order number dated May 25, sorry, is the third sugar import program which we lack 150,000 metric tons of refined sugar that needs to be imported to address our local shortage, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, next topic ay tungkol naman sa Confidential Fund na pinopropose ng Department of Agriculture. Mr. Speaker, can the sponsor confirm? For the first time, magre-request ang DA ng Confidential Fund para sa taong 2024?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, there is a 50 million budget for the Confidential Fund, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ano ang basis ng pagrequest ng DA ng 50 million pesos na Confidential Fund?
Mr. Speaker, national security in Brazil too. One of the major national security goals is food security because food insecurity destabilizes the economy and displaces the marginalized communities resulting into overall social instability. One of the direct threats to food security is agrifishery smuggling because it affects the overall well-being of farmers, fisher folk, and agricultural stakeholders. And it contributes to the losses of government revenues. As the lead agency in ensuring a food secure and resilient Philippines, the Department of Agriculture, is therefore mandated to address this threat through curbing agrifishery smuggling and price manipulation leading to economic sabotage, which involves apprehension and prosecution of illegal smugglers. And that is the reason for the budget of 15, 50 million, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, nung tinanong po natin ang DTI sa kanila ding pagdefend ang budget dito sa plenario. Banggit po ng DTI, bagamat gagawin din nila ang kanilang mandato to go after example 'yung mga nagmanipulate ng presyo. Ang gagawin po nila, kahit wala silang confidential funds, they will closely coordinate with law enforcement agencies para mahuli at mapanagot talaga ang mga gumagawa ng mali when it comes to the supply and prices of goods and commodities. Why can't the DA be inspired by that response of the DTI? Kung pwede din naman pala na magawa ang kaparehong objective ng walang confidential fund?
Mr. Speaker, I cannot speak for the DTI because it's another agency. But in the Department of Agriculture, we have seen price manipulation, smuggling. And therefore, the 50 million is miniscule amount that has to be given so that we can actually make sure that we can fight all these ills of the Department of Agriculture.
So, Mr. Speaker, kasama din ba sa pagagamitan ng 50 million na Confidential Fund ang purchase of information?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, kasama na po yun dyan.
Pati ang mga rental of transport vehicles, rentals and incidental expenses related to maintenance of safe houses?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the operational expenses include vehicle rentals, transportation expenses, equipment of rental communications, internet expenses, intelligence summits, coordinating meetings, purchase of information for informants, and other incidentals on surveillance. Actually, it is also reward for informants to make sure that we get the right tips to catch the smugglers, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, bagamat may ganun pong paliwanag ang Department of Agriculture. Tayo po, Mr. Speaker, still hindi tayo convinced and tingin natin hindi pa rin justified ang request, no? Lalo na, Mr. Speaker, tayo nga naman sa camera, pinag-uusapan na rin naman natin at sasalang na rin naman sa plenario. pinag-uusapan na rin naman natin at sasalang na rin naman sa plenario ang isang anti-smuggling bill. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, while we want to exhaust various means para mapanagot ang mga smuggler, hoarder, cartel, hindi sana maging option or knee-jerk na hakbang natin ay ang pagre-request ng Confidential Funds. Final topic, Mr. Speaker, tungkol naman sa top-heavy yet slim and insufficient bureaucracy sa DA. Mr. Speaker, nung in audit ng COA, merong anim na USAC at 11 Assistant Secretaries ang DA. Pero, Mr. Speaker, as of August 14, 2023, can the sponsor confirm, meron ng walong USAC at nine na Assistant Secretaries. So nadagdagan ng dalawang USAC, nabawasan ng dalawang ASAC. So tama po ba, Mr. Speaker, may dalawang ASAC na ginawa ng USAC ang kanilang posisyon?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that's just a designate. Actually, under the present administration, we have less number of under-secretaries than the previous administration. At present, we have only seven appointed under-secretaries as compared to nine under the previous administration, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, while may ganun sa top-level officials, when we talk about the authorized plantilia, can the sponsor confirm? As of December 31, 2022, merong 8,299 authorized plantilia, pero ang filled up lang ay 5,664.
You are correct, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, pag ganun po, nasa 68% lang ang filled up na authorized plantilia at 460 pa doon ay quarter minus. Mr. Speaker, can the DA also confirm? Merong 6,775 na COS, contact of service, tsaka 3,600 na mga job order?
Yes, we confirm, Mr. Speaker.
Ibig sabihin, Mr. Speaker, sa buong personnel complement ng DA na 16,000 plus, 35,000 lang ang mga regular employees. Malaki majority pa ang mga COS tsaka mga job order. At kapag navacate na ng mga quarter minus ang kanilang posisyon, bawas din sa 460. So, Mr. Speaker, paano mapapabilis ng DA ang pag-fill-in sa mga authorized plantilia na bakante at paano din mareregularize ang mga COS tsaka job order?
Mr. Speaker, due to the elections and the election ban for hiring personnels, the Department of Agriculture is toppled. At the Department of Agriculture resumed the interview and filling up the positions and the vacant positions after the election ban on October 30. And we assure the Honorable Speaker that we will substantially reduce the number of vacant positions by the end of the year, as stated, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I no longer have questions. This is where I end my interpolation and I thank the good sponsor for answering our questions.
Well, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Manuel and of course the sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, pabulalang po pala, can I request for a written copy nung mga NTFLC projects na na-mentioned kanina to be submitted to our office?
We will comply, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Manuel. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Joseph Caravas Paduano of the Abang Linggo Partilis for his interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Will the good sponsor yield to some clarificatory questions?
Congressman.
With my pleasure, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Mr. Speaker. Majority Leader, session resume.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my earlier motion to recognize the Honorable Paduano and instead, I move to recognize the Senior Deputy Minority Leader Paul Daza for his interpolation.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The gentleman from Samar, Paul Daza, Congressman, you're recognized. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker. My first query to the sponsor and to the department is consistent with what I raised during the committee, which was my concern on why Northern Samar was left out of the RCEF. There were assurances made. So I just wanted an assurance again from the good sponsor that that particular issue which affects an entire province will be addressed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the province of the good Congressman Daza is already being evaluated for inclusion for the RCEF, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much for that assurance to my esteemed colleague, the Honorable Albano. Second, there was a very good program that was called Mentoring and Attracting Youth in Agriculture. I think we all support the Department of Agriculture. We need more, we need more of the younger generation to consider farming, to consider agriculture. There was a very good program in the past which was discontinued and we had requested the office that was involved with that internship program for young farmer professionals to submit a proposal for budgetary consideration. And I believe that was sent to the Committee on Appropriations. I think this is a very good program that we should revive. This will essentially encourage students, graduates to get into agriculture and farming. And it would be some sort of an internship program. May I get the comments of the sponsor on this particular proposal submitted to the Committee on Appropriations?
Mr. Speaker, I join the good friend, my good friend Congressman Paul Daza in making sure that the MIA program is actually funded. Although it is not funded for this year's GA 2024, I am now assured by our distinguished Under-Secretary Ding Pangani Ban that we will fund the MIA program, one pilot MIA program, which we will try to expand later on, in particular in Northern Samar, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker, our distinguished sponsor, for that assurance and I hope that you will find a way to augment or to find the funds. It's not such a big amount. I think the initial suggestion was to test it with minimal funds, about 6 million pesos. So thank you very much for that. Mr. Speaker, I heard many of the responses to the various questions. I'm personally satisfied and consistent with what I've heard from my colleagues and us espoused by the executive branch. I think we really should find ways to augment the various programs, activities, projects of the Department of Agriculture. I hope that the sponsor will do his best to lobby within the Committee on Appropriations to find ways to augment certain programs that we badly need for the country. And we thank the Senior Under-Secretary Pangani Ban and the other DA officials for staying this late with us. And I would just like to again manifest my support for the Department of Agriculture.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We assure the good gentleman from Northern Samar and my friend Congressman Paul Daza that we will try to increase the budget as much as we can with the help, of course, the minority.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and again, thank you to our esteemed colleague, Honorable Albano.
Thank you, Congressman Daza. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Caravas Paduano of the Abang Linggo Partilis for his interpolation.
The Abang Linggo Partilis Congressman Joseph Stefan Caravas S. Paduano is therefore recognized and we take notice of the sudden change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You are now satisfied with what I look, Mr. Speaker? Anyway, again, will the good sponsor will yield to some questions?
Mr. Speaker, with this beautiful red tie in place, with my pleasure, Mr. Speaker.
Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Anyway, before I proceed with my few questions, let me manifest and read my manifestation with regards to the budget of the Department of Agriculture, particularly the budget for Philippine Coconut Authority and of course, the Sugar Bowl of the country, which is my province, Negros Occidental, the SRA, Mr. Speaker. Anyway, Mr. Speaker, let me manifest my full and resounding support for the proposed budget of the Department of Agriculture, especially on the budget of the Philippine Coconut Authority. The coconut industry has been cornerstone of our agriculture sector for generations. The country's coconut plantations cover 3.6 million hectares of land across 70 provinces, equivalent to 26% of our total agricultural lands. With 340 million coconut trees that can produce an annual rate of 14 to 15 billion nuts a year, coconut has remained one of our major export products, contributing to 1.6 billion US dollars in export revenues annually. In turn, this helps the 25 million Filipinos who depend on coconuts as their primary source of living. However, in recent years, our coconut industry has been suffering a constant decline, mainly due to aging number of coconut trees in some regions, a series of environmental hazards affecting the country, infestations of pests and disease, and the fact that the last massive coconut planting program was conducted 15 years ago. This resulted in the Philippines losing its dominant position to Indonesia as the global leader in coconut production. In 2021, our CND neighbor managed to produce 17.16 million metric tons of output compared to our 14.72 million. India is also catching up as the third largest coconut producer with 14.30 million metric tons of coconut output. In light of this, the Philippine Coconut Authority, headed by Administrator Bernie Cruz, has formulated four major strategies to invigorate the Philippine coconut industry. This includes, number one, increasing coconut productivity through massive coconut planting and replanting using hybrid varieties. Number two, intensifying coconut farm diversification through partnership and collaborative undertaking with government agencies, SCUs, LGUs, and the private sector. Number three, enhancing coconut processing through the establishment of more village-level coconut processing centers around major coconut production areas. And number four, utilizing new coconut technologies by upgrading existing technology and processing centers and laboratories of PCA and establishing coconut technology and improvement hubs. However, this will all be forenote if we cannot allocate a sufficient budget for the realization of these strategies. For 2024, the PCA submitted a proposed budget of about 10 billion to develop the competitiveness and sustainability of the coconut industry and help small-horder coconut farmers increase their productivity and income. Unfortunately, the budget allocated for PCA for fiscal year 2024 is only 1.81 billion out of the 10 billion original proposed budget, which represents merely 2% of the total budget given to the tax agencies and corporations of the Department of Agriculture. In his message to the PCA 50th founding anniversary, President DBM has stated that there is no reason why Philippines should not be the biggest coconut exporter in the world. Thus, to regain our status as the top coconut-producing country in the world, we must intensify our efforts to revitalize our coconut industry by providing the necessary funds. Therefore, I urge the House leadership and our distinguished colleagues to reconsider the budget allocation for the PCA. We cannot understate the importance of coconut industry in our economy, let alone its deep connection to our heritage and culture. As such, this representation is earnestly hoping that in the proper time, we will increase the budget allocation of PCA and if possible, restore their original budget proposal. Now, let me proceed, Mr. Speaker, with regards to some questions. First, as I have heard during the interpolation of the good Congressman Raoul Manuel, you have requested and it was granted by the DBM your 50 million Confidential Fund.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And that 50 million contribute... will contribute to curb problems of smuggling, price manipulation, especially dunsa rice, onions, and of course, sugar. Tama po ba?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, anyway, I will just, Mr. Speaker, with regards to the Confidential Fund, ito ba po? First time na request ng DA o previous years may mga budget na kayo sa Confidential Fund?
Mr. Speaker, there was a Confidential Fund when it was Secretary Dar, but this is the first time in this administration.
In this administration, but last year's budget?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, last year's budget, zero for Confidential Fund and this is the only year that we've...
Zero. Anyway, let us see. After year-end of 2024, if this 50 million will really help to curb smuggling and price manipulation in our country. Anyway, let me proceed, Mr. Speaker, with regards to the issue about that was tackled during the several hearings since February about the issue of price manipulation, importation, and hoarding with regards to onions. importation, and hoarding with regards to onions. During the recent or last hearing, that was September 5, investigation of the House on the possible hoarding of onion and other agricultural commodities, it has found that numerous cold storage warehouses that currently store onions are not officially accredited by the Bureau of Plant Industries despite the issuance of DA Administrative Circular Number One Series of 2021. The said circular mandates accreditation of CWS that stock agricultural and fisheries products. This representation during the last September 5 hearings reminds that the problem on hoarding may be attributed to the broad discretion of CSWS owners and traders as to when to release their stocks, effectively impeding the market supply and manipulating market prices. The committee members likewise noted that BPI being the regulatory body tasked to accredit CSWS should also regulate the release of stocks. And, Mr. Speaker, during the last hearing, that was September 5, the Committee on Agriculture directed the Bureau of Plant and Industries to issue... to make or to draft a guidelines with regards to compulsory release of stocks in the CWS. Now, they were required... they were directed and directed also to submit such guidelines to this representation, of course, to the Committee on Agriculture. Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, this representation has only received a copy of the draft guidelines just this morning without the guidelines being directed to the BPI with regards to guidelines or amendments to the guidelines of the importation. Now, as I have read, the guidelines that was drafted by BPI... Mr. Speaker, dito po sa guidelines, the BPI will only issue a compulsory release of stocks if, number one, prima facie evidence of hoarding when a trader, distributor, storage facility, minimal processing facility, or primary producer has stocks of any basic or prime agri-physiary commodity 50% higher than that the usual inventory and reasonably limits. Number two, prima facie evidence of profiting whenever basic necessity or prime commodity being sold, as no price tag is misrepresented as to its weight or measurement is adulterated or diluted. And latterly, or whenever a person raises the price of any basic or prime agri-physiary commodity being sold or offered to sell to the general public by more than 10% of its price in the immediately preceding month. Now, will the good sponsor confirm that this is part of the draft guidelines? Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Mr. Speaker, there's actually a new draft, compulsory release of basic and prime agri-physiary commodities. The Department Circular has been drafted to operationalize the provisions of the Price Act, which you have mentioned in total, which gives the DA ancillary powers, again, I repeat, which will give the DA ancillary powers as may be needed to combat illegal acts of price manipulation. This draft is still being... is still subject to the valuable comments of the regulatory agencies such as BAE and NMIS, and they will report their comments this week, I am assured, and we will provide you the comments of this, and we will have to undergo the regulatory impact assessment as provided in existing rules, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
In addition, Mr. Speaker, we can also use as what he has mentioned, the 50 million peso confidential funds to actually help in fighting and combating price manipulators and such, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for that answer, but my question is, if, Mr. Speaker, your honor, if you follow the guideline, then is it correct to say that BPI can only step in and compel the trader, CSWS owners to release their stocks after the DA or the BPI for that matter had already detected prima facie evidence of hoarding?
Mr. Speaker, that is true that the BPI cannot compel the private sector to release the supply before, but with this compulsory release of basic and prime agri-physiary commodities, with that assessment provided as in existing rules, we will be able to compel them to release right away.
Ang problema po, Mr. Speaker, your honor? May may prima facie na nga'y ng hoarding, so ang gusto nating mangyari dapat dito. Ang problema kasi may prima facie na, tapos i-release mo pa ang stock, tapos without any penalties.
Mr. Speaker, with the prima facie evidence, we can easily resist... release the imports.
Oo. No, the stocks in the cold storage warehouse, I'm talking about the stocks in the CSW. Now, may prima facie na, then i-release mo. Ang problema, Mr. Speaker, for the past eight months dun sa investigation, eh may hoarding na nangyari, well, in fact, the record shows... the record shows that by September, there is still 75,000 metric tons, and it was the data confirmed by BPI. That was September, that's why I questioned the policy of the BPI during the time to import, because in their data, it is only 21,000 metric tons needed every month. Now, balik ako lang, may prima facie na tayo, tapos i-release natin. Ayan 'yung problema, Mr. Speaker. Kaya nga sabi ko kanina dun sa labas, because Director Panginiban asked me to talk with regards to the issue that was raised during the last hearing in which he is absent. Sabi ko nga, may problema pa rin to, Mr. Speaker, your honor. Kasi sabi ko nga, may prima facie sa kanino i-release. Ang issue dito, tinatago 'yung mga supplies, may price manipulation, then ang BPI mag-iimport. Here comes now the new guidelines, draft guidelines, prima facie na nga, tapos sa kanino pa i-release. Ayan 'yung problema, kaya, Mr. Speaker, your honor, I hope... I hope the BPI will review this and again go back to what we have agreed during the hearing sa Committee on Agriculture, that they have to make... they have to make the scheduled release based on the available stocks of every CSW in comparison to the actual demand. Now, as of now, it is 21,000 metric tons. This does not answer the problem of hoarding. This does not answers the problem of price manipulation. And again, can I ask the good sponsor, the director of BPI, can you commit to this representation and to this august body that you will review these guidelines and consider the monthly or quarterly checking and release of the stocks in the CSW?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we commit to this. In fact, there is already a receipt of schedules for the releases so that the price will be stabilized, Mr. Speaker. So we therefore commit, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Now, again, with regards to this issue, Mr. Speaker, I would like again to reiterate that BPI should only allow to import if there is indeed problem of supply.
Definitely, Mr. Speaker.
As eh...
Department of Agriculture will only import when there is a need for low supply of products, Mr. Speaker.
And I hope in the next hearing, Mr. Speaker, your honor, the BPI, before the hearing, the BPI will submit again amendments to these draft guidelines that you have sent to the Committee on Agriculture and to this representation.
Mr. Speaker, I can do better than that within this week. Upon the Department Circular has been operational, we will submit within this week the said requests of Congressman Padmano.
Thank you for that commitment, Mr. Sponsor. Now, let me proceed with the last. Yung issue about the importation na lang, last na lang to, Mr. Speaker, the importation. Now, during the last hearing, that was again September 5, BPI was directed to issue again a guidelines with regards to importation, because importation guidelines is related to compulsory release of stocks in the CSWs. Now, in that hearing, BPI has committed to draft also guidelines and, Mr. Speaker, your honors, the BPI committed that they will submit these two guidelines, and that includes the importation guidelines before the budget deliberation of the agency starts in the plenary. And as of this hour, I have never... di po ako nakatanggap. And talking with Director Panginiban, sabi niya, may runa raw na sa cellphone. They were directed, Mr. Speaker, your honor, to submit before the plenary, but they never dared to do it.
Mr. Speaker, my apologies, and the department's apologies for not having given this right away, but we assure you that because of the integration with these two agencies, the BAE and the NMIS, we will submit as soon as possible, Mr. Speaker.
What is as soon as possible? Because the director, Mr. Speaker, the director have said, na may runa po. Is it correct?
Mr. Speaker, with my good friend, we will submit to your office by tomorrow, Mr. Speaker.
By tomorrow?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I will wait for that commitment once again, and I hope... hindi na tayo babalik dun sa committee, Mr. Speaker, your honor. And, Mr. Speaker, again, I would just like to reiterate my support to the budget of the Department of Agriculture, especially the budget of the PCA and SRA. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you Congressman Paduano. You may now return your red tie.
Again, thank you Congressman Carabs Paduano, again for the red tie. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the honorable Mujib Hataman of the Lone District of Basilan for his interpolation.
Gentlemen from the Lone District of Basilan, Congressman Mujib S. Hataman, you're recognized. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, distinguished sponsor. Magandang gabi po, distinguished sponsor. Maigsilang po ito. Meron bang unprogrammed funds ng 2023 ang Department of Agriculture?
Wala po, Mr. Speaker.
Bakit merong narerelease unprogrammed fund for 2023?
Mr. Speaker, that is the loan proceeds from the PRDP, Foreign Assisted Projects.
So therefore, meron unprogrammed fund ang...
That is correct, Mr. Speaker.
DA for 2023. Anong loan proceeds to?
It's PRDP, Philippine Rural Development Projects, Mr. Speaker. World Bank funded, po ito, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, distinguished sponsor. Meron din ho kayong release na program fund for Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw for 2023?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Magkano ang kabuwang amount?
The fund downloaded to BARM, actually, Mr. Speaker, is a total of 493,035,000 pesos, which was transferred to the MAFAR BARM on the 25th of May 2023.
Pwede humingi nung listahan ng programs nung funded... ng downloaded funds for the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region?
With pleasure, Mr. Speaker. I have a copy.
2019 hanggang 2022.
We will submit, Mr. Speaker, but for the May... for this year, we have already, at least, Mr. Speaker, that I can...
Pero, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker, kung pwede ring hingiin, mula nung 2019 hanggang sa 2023?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Kahit hindi naman ho ngayon, kahit bukas ng umaga, 7:00 AM in the morning, sa upisin ako.
Actually, Mr. Speaker... oh, we have it here, the amount appropriated from 2017 to 2024 appropriations, and the allotment that was given is here at 2017, allotment was 466...
Ah, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, in the interest of time, pwedeng pahingi na lang po ng oras.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Kasi kanina ka pa nagse-senyas, gustong umuha. Tapos pinapahaba mo ang sagot mo. Mr. Speaker, ang National Irrigation Administration, magkano ang budget for 2024?
Mr. Speaker, it's 41 billion. 41 billion, Mr. Speaker.
41 billion. Ang 41 billion, ano 'yung item kasama sa 41 billion?
Wala pong R7, Mr. ...
Eto 'yung dinedistribute niyo sa mga regional offices, tama?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Eto 'yung allocation sa mga regional offices?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Tama?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ang sa central office is 36 billion. Ano 'yung 36 billion, bakit sa central office?
Mr. Speaker, in our records, it is only 3.6 billion that is in the central office, Mr. Speaker.
Ano, Mr. Speaker? Distinguished sponsor?
3.6 billion, Mr. Speaker.
36?
3.6 billion, Mr. Speaker.
3.6 billion?
Billion, not millions, Mr. Speaker. Sorry, I stand corrected. The central office only allocated a 3.185 billion, Mr. Speaker, out of the 41 billion, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, one minute suspension. I will confer with the distinguished sponsor.
Session suspended. Session suspended. Majority, session resume. Majority Leader.
Sir Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Hataman for his continuation of the interpretation.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished Sponsor, eto bang 41 billion kasama na rito rin yung mga nakalagay sa special provision?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Anong difference ng communal irrigation system sa small irrigation projects? Kasi sa communal irrigation system, meron kayong 21.650 billion at sa subsidy for small irrigation, merong 2 billion at meron din sa Agri area and Reform Program na 1.2 billion.
Mr. Speaker, yung, um, latter one is the improvement of the communal system. This, uh, other one is for new. Pareho halos pa rehuhu sila. Yung isa lang existing, yung isa new projects, Mr. Speaker.
Which one here is existing? Yung 2 billion? Yung small irrigation project?
Yung small irrigation project, Mr. Speaker.
Yung small?
Yung small irrigation project, Mr. Speaker.
Etong, um, communal irrigation is new?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ilang hectares ang target nito for irrigation?
For the new communal, Mr. Speaker, uh, 5,013 hectares po.
5,013 hectares sa buong Pilipinas, tama?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, um, Mr. Speaker, Distinguished Sponsor, iconnect, i-ankor ko lang ho sa rice program. Kung ang, ano ang rice, um, percent, uh, sufficiency percentage natin ngayon?
84% Mr. Speaker.
84?
84% rice efficiency, Mr. Speaker.
84% na tayo ngayon. Pag dinagdag mo ang 5,013 na may allocation 21 billion, magiging ilan ho yung, magka- mag- ilan na yung rice sufficiency percentage natin by year 2024 and year of 2024?
Mr. Speaker, it is a small increment, but in an increment nevertheless of 50,000 metric tons?
Anyway, Mr. Speaker, uh, Distinguished Sponsor, ay ako nang pahirapan si Tony Pet kasi nangako ako sa kanya na umuuwi kami ng maaga. Pero gusto ko lang tanungin, Mr. Speaker, during nung budget briefing ng Department of Agriculture, ang sinasabi ho sa atin sa committee, pagdating ng 2028 na sa 95% na yung self-sufficiency natin, uh, yun ho yung pinag-usapan and nabanggit din ho ni Yusek Sebastian, at that time, kung taasan natin yung subsidy, um, sa rice, sa rice program, malamang maibaba natin between 30 to 35 pesos ang presyo ng bigas. Is it, uh, may I ask the distinct, may I ask confirmation from the Distinguished Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, with an increased budget, that is actually very attainable, Mr. Speaker.
Can you repeat your response, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, with an increased budget pa, uh, we can assure the, uh, the-
Mga magkano? Para bawasan natin ang budget ng DPWET?
Mr. Speaker, with the additional 5 billion and an incremental, uh, incremental expense, if you are gonna, uh, give me some of the budget of the other agencies, it is more than welcome and we will achieve this.
So parang sinasabi niyo, Distinguished Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, pag magkaroon tayo ng additional 5 billion by year 2024, 35 pesos na lang ang presyo ng bigas?
Mr. Speaker, this will depend on the market conditions, on what is happening. Uh, I wish to inform you that, uh, India has now acceded to opening up its doors, so that's another factor and hopefully, if we can import from there, then we might stabilize at a, a good price, Mr. Speaker.
May I ask, uh, Distinguished Sponsor, kung ang pag-issue ng executive order para magkaroon ng price cap ay recommendation ni DA or ni DTI?
Mr. Speaker, it's both. In fact, uh, uh, the, um, economic manager chaired by Secretary Yokno, uh, forgot that one of his Yuseks was actually participative in the making and crafting of the price cap of the president, Mr. Speaker.
May rice shortage ba tayo o wala ngayon?
There is no rice shortage, Mr. Speaker.
Bakit mataas ang presyo ng bigas? At halimbawa sa probinsya namin, pakonti ng pakonti ng bigas?
Mr. Speaker, uh, of course, all the costs of producing rice have risen, particularly, uh, the fertilizers, the problems with the Ukraine, the fuel cost has already actually increased also and that is one of the reasons, just some of the reasons why the, uh, price of rice has increased.
So therefore, Mr. Speaker, Distinguished Sponsor, yung EO on price cap pa hindi nasusunod kasi halimbawa sa aming probinsya, wala pa akong nakitang bigas na ang presyo is 41 pesos.
Mr. Speaker, uh, the level of compliance is 88%. In fact, in the province of Isabela where I'm coming from, it is actually lower than 41 pesos. Uh, nang 38 pesos pa, as I know, Mr. Speaker. And therefore, uh, it is safe to assume that the price cap of 41, uh, has been complied.
Magkano ang presyo ng bigas sa Isabela?
38 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Pwede bang dalhin mo sa Basilan ang 38 pesos, Distinguished-
With your cost, I think it will go up to 41 by the time you bring it down. But definitely, Mr. Speaker, my brother Governor Rodolfo, Rudito Albano will, uh, sell you some of the prices for prices that, uh, our cooperatives is selling, Mr. Speaker.
One last three, uh, Distinguished Sponsor, on Koa Report. Um, sinasabi ho ng Koa nung 2022, ang OSEC, meron silang unobligated amount of 2.954 billion dahil sa delay ng procurement process and disquinteenyan sa implemented projects. Anong ibig sabihin nun nito? At ano-anong project to?
Mr. Speaker, I'd be happy to give you the list if you want.
Okay, can I have the list? Uh, in the interest of time, can you just give me the list?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I will, uh, give you the list.
Then another, uh, co-op findings, uh, Distinguished Sponsor, and disbursed amount of 3.498 billion. This was reverted back to Bureau of Treasury due to non-liquidation of previous cash advances. Anong mga cash advances to? Mr. Speaker, Distinguished Sponsor, in the interest of time, can you just give me the list of-
Again, Mr. Speaker, I have it here and I will just be able to give you the list, Mr. Speaker.
Maawa ka na kay Tony Pet. Eto yung pinakamalala, Distinguished Sponsor. Etong unliquidated fund transfer to different implementing agencies and NGOs, amounting to 24.25 billion.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have the non-liquidated fund transfers to IAs and NGOs worth 24.255 billion, Mr. Speaker.
Bakit pan-transfer ang ano nito, Mr. Speaker? Pan-transfer ito within the Department of Agriculture or to other agencies?
Other agencies po. Ang implementing agencies po are LGUs.
Okay nga, ang sinasabi ko lang ho dito, implementing agency that are attached to the Department of Agriculture?
Not necessarily, Mr. Speaker.
O pwedeng magbigay ho kayo ng halimbawa na tatlong agencies na hindi nag-liquidate? Na nagpan-transfer kayo? Kasama na ho dito yung na-release niyo sa BARM?
No, Mr. Speaker, not, uh, hindi ho kasama-
Implementing agencies to?
Mr. Speaker, kasama po yung mga abolished agencies such as NABCOR, PADCC, CREC. Kasama po yun. Ayun, tatlo. Mr. Speaker, kasama po kasi yung mga prior years.
Because NABCOR is attached GOCCE sa Department of Agriculture, pero ba't sa kanina sinasabi niyo na hindi?
Mr. Speaker, kasama po, not necessarily lang yun lang po ang, uh, agencies na attached.
Sa anong status nung pondo na to?
Mr. Speaker, ongoing po hangga't ngayon ang liquidation process at saka ang hirap po mag-liquidate dito, Mr. Speaker. Hindi pa po tapos yung investigation.
Hindi, pero anong year, ano tong timeline nung pondo na to? Bago, matagal na, or?
Yung 8 billion po, prior years. Ang iba po dito ay ang aging po, less than one year, 358 sa NGAs, ang total ho at 3 bil- 3 billion? Ang one year but less than five years, ang total po from NGAs, LGUs, GOCCEs, NGOs, POs, bureaus, and ROs, 3.4 billion, yung more than five years.
Distinguished Sponsor, pwedeng pahingi na lang din ng listahan?
Sige po.
One last, Mr. Speaker, Distinguished Sponsor. Sa Halal, ang DA ho ay parte nung Halal Board? Di ba? Part kayo ng-
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Magkano ang pondo ni DA pagdating sa Halal Program?
For 2023, Mr. Speaker, it was 21 million and for, for this, this is the Extension Support Services where Halal is lodged and for 2024, it's 17 million, Mr. Speaker.
Magkano sa 2024?
17,699,000.
So pababa ng pababa yung pondo para sa Halal Program?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ano ang PAPs ng 17 million na to?
Nasa Extension Supports or Assets, Mr. Speaker.
Pag ganito ho ang ano, ah, pag ganito ho, um, parang hindi seryoso, to be honest, pwede bang sabihin natin na hindi seryoso si DA pagdating sa Halal Program? Kasi pababa ng pababa ang budget?
Mr. Speaker, it is still a priority, but it's not the top priority because, uh, as you saw, uh, as you saw in our budget deliberations-
Hindi siya top priority, less priority siya. Priority siya pero-
Priority nandun the less, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi nga, less priority siya.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Bakit to? Di ba kasama kayo sa board ng Halal? At sinasabi natin isang malaking, kumbaga yung Halal economy is, eh, trillion dollars potential investment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, it has a potential investment for export, but, uh, there's local, in the local demand, it is, uh, mababa po ang demand, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi naman ho local ang pinag-usapan natin pagdating sa Halal economy?
That's true, Mr. Speaker, and in, in fact, uh, uh, that is why mababa yung budget natin is because we cannot produce as much as the other countries that in, uh, are exporting Halal, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi nga natin priority program?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it is the less priority. It's one of the important ones, but it is not prioritized in the top, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, uh, I'm being assured by our, uh, undersecretary-
Mr. Speaker, one minute suspension.
Session suspended. Mr. Speaker. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Sponsor to continue the, uh, interpretation.
Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker. See Department of Science and Technology- Si Department of Science and Technology ho, meron silang ini-establish na mga Halal laboratory, okay? Kasi 'yun 'yung role nila as DOST and in fact, uh, nag-allocate sila ng 100 million for additional funding for 2024. Can I also request Department of Agriculture to add, um, to allocate 100 million also as part of the Halal Board, uh, distinguished sponsor, Mr. Speaker? Can I get the commitment of the Department of Agriculture?
Mr. Speaker, uh, because of the budget constraints, I can assure you right now, just for 2024, that we can increase it to 50 million at this point pending the, uh, of course, uh, asking other departments to sacrifice most of the priority projects and put this into perspective for 2025, an increase later on.
Mr. Speaker, tinapatan niyo lang ang Confidential Fund ng Department of Agriculture? Kung tutuusin, hindi namang kailangan ng Confidential Fund of, ng Department of Agriculture?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Baka pwede i-realign natin, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, 'yung 50 million na 'yun na Confidential Fund at ilagay na lang natin sa Halal, uh, program ng Department of Agriculture?
Mr. Speaker, the offer is very generous knowing that in 2018, the whole, uh, Halal program was only 44 million. And I'm assuring the distinguished friend and my good friend Hataman of Basilan that, uh, we will make this into a priority project so that we can fund and increase it.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, pansinin niyo ang historical budget ng DA pagdating sa Halal. Ang tanong ko, mula nung pinasa natin ang batas nung Halal, wala hong impact ang Halal even sa Department of Agriculture, kasi nga hindi natin siniseryoso. Ginagawa lang nating slogan na multi-billion na industry ang Halal, pero ang totoo, hindi tayo seryoso.
Mr. Speaker, knowing that there is a block grant also for Halal, uh, malaking pera ho 'yung 50 million at, uh, baka maantala po 'yung mga ibang programs, lalo na 'yung hinihingi niyo po na 50 million na tanggalin sa Confidential Funds, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, you honor, wala namang program ang Confidential Fund eh. Standby fund lang 'yun.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ang sinasabi niyo kanina, sasagot niyo kay Congressman Manuel, sabi niyo para sa anti-smuggling, eh ano pa ho ang pondo ng Bureau of Customs? Dapat trabaho ni Bureau of Customs 'yun, hindi trabaho ni Department of Agriculture.
Mr. Speaker, the block grant and one of the reasons why, uh, the budget for Halal has been going around is actually 80 billion.
Block grant? Ang block grant niyo ho sa BARM, andoon 'yung pangsueldo, andoon 'yung MOE, at hindi rin ho totoo na 80 billion. In fact, 70 billion lang for 2024.
Last May, 10 billion po, Mr. Speaker, making it 80 billion and this is lodged already. And, uh, as, as we seen in historical records, the highest in 2018 for Halal is only 44 million and I beg the indulgence of my good friend.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, doon sa 44 billion ho, anong nangyari sa Halal program ng Department of Agriculture?
Mr. Speaker, that's all part of the training programs. In fact, that's why I'm assuring the distinguished gentleman from Basilan that if we can just go through, because if this proposal was, uh, given prior to the funding of the NEP, uh, then maybe we could have accommodated the 100 million request of the congressman from Basilan. But as of now, Mr. Speaker, even the 50 million is already hard for us to reallocate some of the resources pending, of course, 'yung mga, matatamaan naman po 'yung mga ibang mga grants.
Of course, sa totoo lang, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, if the, if Department of Agriculture can commit the 100 million allocation and ala, and realign the 50 million Confidential Fund, I will add my interpolation and terminate the period interp- um, period of interpolation and debate. If not, then let us suspend the budget hearing.
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker. Session suspended. Mr. Speaker. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the honorable sponsor, uh, Tony Pet Albano, for his awaited answer to the interpolator's question.
Mister sponsor, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As again mentioned, uh, we already constraineded with a lot of budget constraint with all departments and programs. The most amount that we can give this 2024, and I don't even know how we can come up with another budget reduction of 10 million for other programs, is 50 million this 2024. And may I now request and assure the gentleman from Basilan, my very good friend, Mojiv Hataman, that in 2025, we will put this as one of the priority programs and hopefully increase and commit the 100 million.
And we increase it by 2025 to 150 million, distinguished sponsor?
Mr. Speaker.
So that I can end my interpolation?
Mr. Speaker, as I've mentioned, we will try for the 150 million, but I assure the speaker, Mr. Speaker, that the 100 million should be added on the 2025 budget, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, with that commitment, uh, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, this representation, um, add my deinterpolation and on the part of the minority, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the budget of the Department of Agriculture and other, and their attached agency, I move to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. And I so move, uh, Mr. Speaker.
To grant, Congressman Hataman. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
A part of the majority, we join the minority in their motion to terminate the interpolations on the proposed budget of the Department of, uh, um, Agriculture and its attached agencies and corporations.
There's a joint motion to terminate the interpolations on the proposed budget of the Department of Agriculture, including attached agencies and corporations. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The interpolations of the proposed budget of the Department of Agriculture, including attached agencies, corporations, hereby terminated. Congratulations. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend deliberation of House Bill Number 8980.
There's a motion to suspend, as stated. Objection, if approved. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 9284 under Committee Report 774, submitted by the Committee on Agriculture and for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said bill?
There's a motion for House Bill 9284 amended. The general, uh, any objection? Hearing none. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill. Secretary General, please.
House Bill Number 9284, An Act Declaring Large-Scale Agri-Fishery Commodities and Tobacco Smuggling, Hoarding, Profiteering, Cartilizing, and Other Acts of Market Abuse as Economic Sabotage, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 10845, otherwise known as the Anti-Agricultural Smuggling Act of 2016.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the said bill is that is in the period of amendments. I move that the chairperson...
Majority Leader, before, before you start...
Uh, the parliamentary status is that we terminated, uh, period of censorship and debate.
Before we do that...
And I therefore move that we open the period of amendments.
Thank you, Majority Leader. But before we do that, may we request that please, uh, our guests, uh, from the Department of Agriculture Attached Agencies to please clear the plenary in order we can resume the debates and deliberation. Ample request, please, Majority Leader. As stated, you were saying?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
There is a motion to open the period of amendments on House Bill 9284 as amended. Any objection? Hearing none. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, there being no comedic amendments, I move that we now proceed to consider the individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize honorable, uh, Mika Swansing for her individual amendments.
Congresswoman Swansing for individual amendments, please proceed, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may I propose the following amendment to House Bill Number 9284 entitled "An Act Declaring Large-Scale Agri-Fishery Commodities and Tobacco Smuggling, Hoarding, Profiteering, Cartilizing, and Other Acts of Market Abuse as Economic Sabotage, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 10845, otherwise known as the Anti-Agricultural Smuggling Act of 2016." Mr. Speaker, may I respectfully propose that on page 8, lines 28 to 35, delete the entire paragraph and in lieu thereof, insert the following. "In all cases, the agri-fishery commodities or tobacco subject to large-scale smuggling, hoarding, profiteering, cartilizing, or other acts of market abuse shall be confiscated and the property used in these acts shall be forfeited in favor of the government consistent with the provisions of Republic Act Number 10863, otherwise known as the Customs Modernization and Tariff Act or CMTA and Republic Act Number 7581, otherwise known as the Price Act as amended, provided that in the event an entity fails to produce evidence in the contrary, within five working days, the agri-fishery commodities or tobacco may be seized and be subjected to forfeiture proceedings." Mr. Speaker, that would be my proposed amendment.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
On the part of the majority, we accept and move for its approval.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The, the motion to, for individual amendment is hereby approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. That would be all.
Thank you, Congresswoman Swansing. And Majority Leader, please.
I move that we recognize Honorable, uh, Wilbert Lee for his individual amendments.
Mr. Speaker, may I propose the following amendments to House Bill Number 9284 entitled "An Act Declaring Large-Scale Agri-Fishery Commodities and Tobacco Smuggling, Hoarding, Profiteering, Cartilizing, and Other Acts of Market Abuse as Economic Sabotage, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 10845, otherwise known as the Anti-Agricultural Smuggling Act of 2016." Mr. Speaker, may I respectfully propose on page 2, line 26, after the word "under", replace section 4 to section 3. Mr. Speaker.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Sponsor, you accept?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. Amendment is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
On page 2, lines 27 to 30, after the word "under", replace section 4A to section 3A.
Mr. Sponsor?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
The House, please?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
The amendment is hereby approved. Any objection? Amendment is approved. Majority Leader.
On page 3, line 28, replace the number of the section from section 4 to section 3.
Mr. Sponsor, what do you say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
The House, please?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
Amendment, uh, any objection? The amendment is hereby approved. Majority Leader, please.
On page 4, line 12, line 36, delete 1 million pesos and in lieu thereof, put 2,500 pesos.
Mr. Sponsor, please?
2,500,000 pesos.
Can you repeat that, uh, uh, Mr. Interpreter? 2 million...
2,500,000 pesos, Mr. Speaker.
2,500,000 pesos. As stated, Mr. Sponsor, what does he say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
Any objection? Uh, hearing none, the amendment is approved. Congressman Lee.
On page 4, line 6, delete the words "import permit" and in lieu thereof, put "import clearance documents".
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
The amendment, any objection? The amendment is hereby approved. Congressman Lee.
On page 7, line 19, delete the words "import permits" and in lieu thereof, put "import clearance documents".
Mr. Sponsor, what say you?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
The amendment, any objection? The amendment is hereby approved. Congressman Lee.
On sections 3 and 4 of Republic Act 10845, all references to the words "import permit" or "import permits" shall now be changed to "import clearance documents".
Mr. Sponsor?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
House, please?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
Any objection on the amendment? The House? The, such motion is approved. Congressman Lee, again.
On page 9, line 6, replace the number of the section from section 7 to section 5.
Mr. Sponsor, uh, please?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
The House?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
There's a motion, uh, uh, there's no objection. The amendment is approved. Mr. Congressman Lee?
Mr. Speaker, that will be on, that will be all on my part.
Thank you, Congressman Lee of Agri Party List. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. Uh, I move to recognize Congressman Australia for his individual amendments.
Congressman Australia is hereby recognized. Please proceed, sir.
Uh, may I have an additional proposal? The following amendments to House Bill Number 9284 On page 10, section nine, the bill, uh, delete lines two and three and the succeeding items renumbered accordingly. And on the same page, 10, delete lines six to 17 and in lieu thereof, insert the following as the new number seven in the composition of the council.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
About the House?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for this approval.
There's a motion, is there no objection? Therefore, it's approved.
And replace it with the three representatives from the private sector whose membership shall be nationwide, chosen by the President of the Republic of the Philippines from the nominees of the following sectors: rice, sugar, corn, livestock, poultry, onion, vegetables, fruits, fisheries, other aquatic products and tobacco, provided that the sector representative shall serve for a fixed term of three years unless earlier replaced by the President upon recommendation of the council.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
The House?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for this approval.
There's a motion, there any objection? The amendment is hereby approved. Congressman Australia, please.
On page 10, Mr. Speaker, after line 22, insert a paragraph to read as follows: "The council may seek the assistance, advice, and expertise of other concerned government agencies and other stakeholders in the formulation of policies and programs to ensure the efficiency and effectiveness of the measures being undertaken to combat large-scale smuggling, hoarding, profiteering, cartilizing, or other acts of market abuse."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
The House?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for this approval.
There's a motion, hereby, any objection? Hereby approved. Congressman Australia, please.
On page 11, section 11, delete lines 22 to 28 and in lieu thereof, section 5C shall now read as follows: Section 5C, Anti-Agrifishery Commodities and Tobacco Economic Sabotage Task Force. The Office of the President through the Council may create an Anti-Agrifishery Commodities and Tobacco Economic Sabotage Task Force, which shall be under the control and supervision of the Council. The members of the task force shall be appointed by the Council.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
There's a motion for its approval, any objection? Motion is approved. Congressman Australia?
On page 13, line one, replace the number of the section from section seven to section six.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
About the House?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for its approval.
There is a motion, any objection? The amendment is hereby approved. Congressman Australia, please.
On page 13, line 12, replace the number of the section from section six to section seven.
Mr. Sponsor, please?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
On the part of the House, we accept and move for this approval.
There's a motion for its approval. Um, is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Amendment is hereby approved. Congressman Australia, please.
On page 13, insert a new section 17 to read as follows and the succeeding section shall be renumbered accordingly. Section 17, separability clause: If any portion of this act is declared unconstitutional or invalid, the portions or provisions which are not affected shall continue to be in full force and effect. Section 18, repeal clause: All laws decreased, executive issuance, rules, and regulations, or any part therefore inconsistent with this act are hereby repealed and/or modified accordingly. Section 19, effectiveness clause: This shall take effect after 15 days following its publication in the official gazette or in two newspapers of general segregation. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Does the sponsor say?
We gladly accept, Mr. Speaker.
The House, please?
On the part of the House, we accept and move for this approval.
There's a motion for approval. Is there no objection? The motion of, or the amendments? Hereby approved. Congressman Australia?
That's all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
We thank you Congressman Robert Raymond Australia of Abuno Partilis. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of individual amendments.
There's a motion to close the period of individual amendments. The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9284, as amended.
There is a motion that... There is a motion to approve on second reading as House Bill 9284 as amended. Any objection? All those in favor say aye? All those not in favor say nay? The ayes have it, House Bill 9284 as amended. Pass on second...
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. My dear colleagues, congratulations po sa ating lahat.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Speaker, I move that we resume, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8980 as contained under Committee Report Number 766. And for this purpose, Mr. Speaker, may I further move, may I further request that the Secretary should read the title of the said bill.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read title as stated. Secretary General.
House Bill 8980, An Act Appropriating Funds for the Operation of the Government of the of the Republic of the Philippines from January 1 to December 31, 2024.
Before anything else, may we request silence? In the plenary, please. Thank you, Secretary General. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we begin consideration of the proposed budget for the Department of Health, including its attached agencies.
There's a motion to begin the deliberation of Department of Health, including its attached agency. Any objection? Hearing none. Please proceed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we request that we recognize the officials of the Department of Health headed by Secretary Teodoro J. Hermosa and all his under secretaries, assistant secretaries, and all the heads of the attached agencies and corporations of the same agency, Mr. Speaker.
The Chair acknowledges the heads and officials of the Department of Health and its attached agencies. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Senior Vice Chair Sela Luz Kimbo from the Second District of Marikina to deliver her sponsorship speech and to answer the questions on the proposed budget of the Department of Health and its attached agencies.
The Chair and, um, the sponsor of the Department of Health and its attached agency, Congressman Kimbo of Marikina City is recognized. Please proceed, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I along with the Honorable Janet Garin, the Honorable Nikako, and the Honorable Lucille Nava have the privilege to sponsor the budget of the Department of Health for fiscal year 2024, a budget that is instrumental in realizing our collective vision for the health and well-being of every Filipino. The DOH serves as our guiding light in the continuous journey towards achieving better health for all. The agency's role encompasses not only the provision of quality healthcare, but also the holistic development of our health systems, encompassing the fortification of health facilities, the refinement of health financing, and the unwavering support of our dedicated healthcare workers. Despite these broad goals, we must admit that our healthcare system needs all the help it can get. When it comes to our healthcare workers, our present number meets only half of the international standard. Additionally, the decline in the share of medical costs covered by failed health necessitates a reevaluation of our health financing strategies. While these are just a few of the challenges we face, let them not dishearten us, instead let them galvanize us into collective action. And though the national emergency brought about by the COVID pandemic is over, to this day, the aftermath of the pandemic continues to shape our healthcare landscape. It is imperative then that we remain vigilant and proactive in addressing the evolving needs of our health sector. This is a call for us to come together to address the diverse needs of our healthcare sector and to empower the DOH to effect meaningful change. It is within our power and duty as Congress to deliberate and adjust the budget to ensure that the final budget is one that we believe can adequately provide for the needs of our people. Thus, let us approach this task with optimism and a shared sense of purpose. The health of every Filipino is a national priority. I appeal to my esteemed colleagues to lend their support to the DOH. By prioritizing the budget of the DOH, we make a commitment to the health of our citizens, to the economic strength of our country, and to a future where the Philippines thrives in health and prosperity. Together, let us embrace the challenges, act with resolve, and build a nation where health and well-being are acceptable, accessible to all. Salamat, Mr. Speaker. I am ready to answer any questions.
Maraming salamat, Madam Sponsor, the Congressman Sela Kimbo. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Arlene Brosas from the Gabrela Partilis for her interpolation.
Gabrela Partilis, Representative Arlene de Brosas. You're recognized. Please proceed, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, will the good sponsor yield to some questions, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, ang budget ng DOH sa halos 3 million women of reproductive age ay approximately 287 pesos lang kada isang kababaihan. Ano po 'yung rason ng malaking kakulangan ng budget para sa family planning and reproductive health? Hindi po ito sapat para sa pangangailangan pang reproductibo. Ano ang plano ng DOH para dito? Mr. Speaker?
Well, Mr. Speaker, ang unang rason, pasensya na sa ating kasama, the Honorable Brosas at, uh, ang sagot usual, limited fiscal space. Bagamat gusto natin na mas mataas pa sana ang budget, pero talagang ito lamang ang ating budget ceiling sa taong 2024. And at the same time, inaasahan din natin under a devolved healthcare system na merong dagdag na suporta mula sa ating LGUs, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, Madam, uh, Mr. Speaker, simula kasi ng mapasa ang RH law noong 2012, halos threefold 'yung binaba ng budget nito. At patuloy itong bumababa hanggang sa ngayon, lalo na zero line item budget for reproductive needs and family planning. So actually, uh, natanggap po namin 'yung sulat kung saan nagsammit po kayo ng requested action, 'yung request sana na magcreate ng separate line item for maternal health and reproductive health, uh, Mr. Speaker. So, dito ano po 'yung, ano po 'yung ating ano plano dito?
Mr. Speaker, ang DOH ay sangayon po sa panukala na magroon ng separate line item para sa para sa family planning and reproductive health. At ito po ay sinulat na po ng DOH sa isang liham addressed to the Committee on Appropriations. So, ang amount po para sa line item na'to ay 749 million, 919,000 para sa taong 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, um...
And in addition, sorry, in addition, Madam Speaker, meron pang dagdag na 607.8 million na nakaalat sa CHD and under the Health Promotion Program, may 165.9, um, million for a total of 1.523 billion.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, 'yung 600 at tsaka 'yung 100 plus, may we have a copy? May we be furnished a copy of what you read, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, DOH shall submit.
Thank you. Kasi ang meron lang po kami ay 'yung sa FPRH, 'yung sinabit ninyo ay Family Planning and Reproductive Health, FPRH, which is 749 million lang. So meron pa palang 600 plus 100 million, so a total of 1 point something, no? Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker, kaugnay dyan. Ano po 'yung ginagawa, ano naman po 'yung ginagawa ng DOH tungkol sa women-centered, rights-based post-abortion care, registration of emergency contraception, and misoprostol for prevention and treatment of PPH? Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, ang pinaprobide lang po ng DOH is post-management abortion care. So meron po tayo mga clinics na nagpaprobide po ng post-abortion care, post-management abortion care. And this is nationwide. So in all hospitals? But induced abortion remains illegal, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, meron po bang report na, um, nationwide report tayo dito, Mr. Speaker? On the management per se?
Well, right now, Mr. Speaker, kasama po ito sa individual hospital reports, but what we can do is, we can collate? We can collate all of these and, um, submit, Mr. Speaker, to the Office of the Honorable Brosas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, isa pang question, bakit wala sa module ng family planning training ng DOH ang tungkol sa emergency contraception? Kailan magiging bahagi ng mga health services ng mga DOH licensed health facilities ang nagpaprobide, ang pagpaprobide ng emergency contraception? Mr. Speaker?
Ang dahilan na dito, Mr. Speaker, ay meron pong Supreme Court decision. May status ko ante Supreme Court decision at, uh, on, uh, emergency contraception, Mr. Speaker?
So, Mr. Speaker, 'yung dahilan kung bakit wala sa module, pero...
Tama po.
Uh, how about this? 'Yung kailan magiging bahagi na health services ng mga DOH? Hindi talaga ever parang ganyan, Mr. Speaker? Kung emergency contraception?
Tama po, Mr. Speaker. Hangga't lifted po ang desisyon na 'yan ng Supreme Court, 'yan po ang magiging policy ng DOH, Mr. Speaker.
How about, Mr. Speaker, 'yung, uh, kasi taong 2020 naglabas, no? Ang komisyonan population ng teenage or adolescent pregnancy ay isang national emergency. Uh, Mr. Speaker, ano ang mga programa at plano ng DOH rito? Tapos magkano 'yung nakalaan na pondo para sa 2024?
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, for teenage pregnancy, meron po tayong programs in partnership with the DepEd, and so, marami po tayong, what is called, demand generation interventions. They're mostly information campaigns, so the idea is, of course, to increase awareness among our teenagers. Meron po tayong national campaigns, ah, meron din po tayong programs that will build knowledge and skills of young people. A number of programs that target adults so that they can better communicate with young people, basically, ang tinatarget dito ay mga parents. Meron din tayong assistance on governance and systems. Dito naman po ay ang isang intervention po dito na bahagi ng RH law ay ang comprehensive sexuality education training. Ang kabuang budget para sa health promotion ay 166 million for 20, for 2024, Mr. Speaker?
126 million?
166 million.
So 'yan po ang nakalaan na budget for 2024?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, mahaba ang listahan ng mga programa, and we will just submit to you this full list.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, please submit. 'Yung, Mr. Speaker, tatlong kababaihan ang namamatay sa unsafe abortion complication araw-araw. Ang lack of access at available services sa post-abortion care and safe abortion sa Pilipinas ay malaking dahilan kung bakit namamatay ang mga Pilipinong nagbubuntis. So ano na po ang plano ng DOH dito?
Sa ngayon, Mr. Speaker, ang key intervention ay prevention. So ito pong nabanggit ko kanina na mga iba't ibang mga information campaign. Ay sa ngayon, ito po ang nagiging platform para maaddress po ito mga problema ng mortalities as a result of induced abortion.
Mr. Speaker, will you agree na ang kailangan natin ay sufficient public funding because it plays a key role, sufficient public funding, because it plays a key role in ensuring a proper and effective implementation of the RH law, as providing adolescents with the necessary support and services to prevent unplanned pregnancy, hindi po ba? Kaya nga malaking panalo natin 'yung karapatan sa kalusugan 'yung RH law, Mr. Speaker. Kailangan po nito ng dagdag na sapat na pondo para sa para sa effective implementation, kasi 'yun naman 'yung kailangan natin. So kapagka tumatas ng tumatas 'yung bilang ng ating mga nabubuntis na kabataan, Mr. Speaker, we should do something about it, at ang tingin po namin dyan, sufficient public funding meron talaga dapat tayong ipopondo dito na sapat, Mr. Speaker. So 'yung fiscal space over doon sa pangangailangan, Mr. Speaker, baka ito, kailangan talaga natin itong ano, iconsider, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
Tama po, dahil napakabigat po ng datos sa ngayon, dahil 3 out of 10 po ay namamatay po dahil sa induced abortion. Kaya importante po na mahanapan natin ang paraan para madagdagan ang budget na 166 million. Tama po, we agree with you na napakaliit ng 166 million.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, 'yung susunod ko pong tanong ay kaugnay sa field health budget. Mr. Speaker, tataas ng nasa 1.3 billion ang pondo ng field health sa proposed 2024 budget, mula 102 billion sa 2023 tungong 101.5 billion sa 2024. Ano po ang kasalukuyang fund life ng field health, Mr. Speaker?
Sa, sa ngayon po, field health is a going concern. Hindi natin siya bibigyan ng bilang na 1 year, 2 years. Ang sabi ng ating opisyalis mula sa field health, it is here to stay on, in their exact words. Sa ngayon po, pagtitignan po natin ang, ang kanilang assets, sobra-sobra po sa minimum amount of reserves ang nasa kanilang cash balances. Kasi ayon sa batas, ang kailangan lang na minimum ay 2 years lamang ng annual needs to pay for benefit expenses, which is more or less about 300 billion. Pero sa ngayon po, ay nasa higit 400 ang reserves natin ay 336.2. So this exceeds the required 2-year reserves ayon sa batas.
Mr. Speaker, ano po 'yang binabasa ninyo na reference?
Ah, ito po ay
Mula sa field health?
Kaling po ito sa financial statement ng field health, as of June 2023, ang reserve fund ay 336.2 billion pesos.
May we have a copy of that, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, we will, can we just give you a copy? Kasi ito po ay cue cards lamang.
Okay. Ah, Mr. Speaker, kaugnay nito, ano na ba 'yung support value ngayon ng field health?
Sa ngayon po, ang, ah, Mr. Speaker, how would you like to define support value? Is that total, total value of claims divided by total hospital bill?
Yeah, hospitalization costs of a patient.
Ang average the average support value the average, the national average is 65.89, Mr. Speaker? So that means that for every 100 pesos in hospitalization costs, field health would shoulder 66 pesos. 'Yun pong ibig sabihin ng support value na 65.89 percent, Mr. Speaker?
65?
65.89 percent. Pero syempre, ah, Mr. Speaker, ang, 'yan po ay average para sa lahat ng klase ng field health members, at syempre dahil, ah, this would tend to be bigger, mas malaki ang suporta na natatanggap ng ating indigent members. So para sa ating sponsored members, ibig sabihin ito 'yung mga 4P's members po natin, ang average support value naman po ay 79.48 percent. Ibig sabihin, halos 80 pesos sa kada 100 pesos ng hospitalization cost ng ating mga indigent Filipinos ay sagot ng field health.
Thank you, ah, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what about 'yung, meron po bang latest na study that will show kung 'yung field health, ano 'yung hindi nakover ng field health, no, sa charges for hospital services? Meron na po ba kayong latest na, na survey or study diyan?
Well, sa ngayon po, ang ginagamit natin na provider payment scheme is a case rate. So ibig sabihin po, hindi nakatulad nung araw na fee-for-service na, na ka-buy type of service, so merong room and board, merong labs, merong para sa physician services, para sa lab des, et cetera. Sa ngayon po, ang bayad is kabuan by illness. So hindi natin, kumbaga, hindi siya, wala po siyang breakdown.
Wala siyang standard.
Wala siyang breakdown. So ibig sabihin, halimbawa po para sa panganganak, ang NSD ay magkano, 19,000? Ang NSD pag, ah, manganganak na normal is 8,000. So hindi siya naka-breakdown by specific service, 8,000 siya, kabuan.
Kasi, Mr. Speaker, kaya kayo natanong, Mr. Speaker, kung sinasabi niyo kanina na 80 out of 100, for example, 'yung ano, parang 80 percent 'yun eh, no, sa 100. Pero meron tayong pag-aaral noong, this is coming from the PIDS, 2022 studies, that show that field health does not cover more than 40 percent of charges for hospital services. So tinatanong ko po kung may latest para makita natin ano 'yung inimprove niya, pero kung 80 to 100, ibig sabihin napakataas nun, kasi 40 percent 'yung hindi nakover eh. So ibig sabihin, tumaas agad siya ng 40 percent after, ah, after 2022, 23, 24, after 2 years? After a year, Mr. Speaker?
Well, 'yung 80 percent would be for the lowest income households.
Indigent, okay.
Yes, for the national average, that's about 65.89 percent. So that's not too far away from the PIDS study, which is about 60 percent.
Okay.
So, palagay ko, with a margin of error of 5 percent, ay hindi siya masyado nalalayo.
Okay. Yes, ah, kaya ako tinanong 'yun para maklarify tayo, Mr. Speaker, doon sa ano. Anyway, Mr. Speaker, on my third question dyan sa field health, dagdag pa, pag-usapan rin po natin ang field health coverage, no? Noong Committee de Liberations, nagpahayag po kami sa Gabriella Women's Party ng sobrang pagkabahala dahil sa mga pag-aaral na ang richer regions, provinces, at households lamang ang nakikinabang sa field health. Ano ang mga ginagawang hakbang ng field health upang tugunan ito? Nag-example po ako niyan last time, 'yun sa BARM, diba, tsaka sa iba pang mga areas. Sa Lanau, Basilan, Sulu, Tawi-Tawi, 'yan po, na least ang field health coverage.
Well, sa ngayon po, pagbabasahay naman po natin ang batas, malinaw naman po na universal coverage sa mandato ng field health. So, wala naman talagang dapat na dahilan na maging bias ang pamamalakad ng field health for any particular region. Dapat lahat po ng Pilipino ay merong pare-parehong opportunity na makinabang dito sa field health. Pero kung ang nangyayari po ay mas nakikinabang ang
It's a region.
Nasa mas mayaman na region, it's most likely because of the supply side considerations. Ibig sabihin, baka dahil ito ay dala na rin ng inequitable distribution of our hospitals, for example, or other healthcare facilities. So kasi baliwala naman po ang ating magiging field health coverage, halimbawa, kung wala naman pong hospital na kung saan pwede mong gamitin ang iyong field health coverage. So alam naman po natin, halimbawa na, pag ikumpara po natin ang BARM sa NCR, ay talaga naman pong dihamak na mas swerte po ang mga taga NCR kumpara sa BARM in terms of the number of hospital beds, for example. So palagay ko 'yun ang nagiging isang paliwanag kung bakit mas nagiging inequitable ang pag-benefit mula sa field health membership.
'Yan nga po 'yung kinuwestion namin last time, ano, by Wealth Quintil, the rich households in the Philippines had the highest percentage of population with field health insurance coverage, umabot po siya ng 83.6 percent. The region with the lowest household population covered by field health insurance, halimbawa ang BARM, covering 41.4 percent lang. So ibig sabihin, poorest provinces have low coverage with senior citizens, indigents, or sponsored beneficiaries, mostly as members. Mindanao also has the largest share of indirect contributors, mostly indigent or sponsored, at 57 percent. So nagse-share naman sila, pero mababa 'yung kanilang ano, of government programs, halimbawa, 4Ps are said to be at higher risk of contracting diseases. Tapos 'yun nga, in identify, 5 conflict-affected provinces, Magindanao, Lanau del Sur, Basilan, Sulu-Sulu, Tawi-Tawi, 'yun 'yung may least field health coverage, at 52 percent below. Na sinasabi ninyo, ang explanation ay 'yung hospitals, tama ba? Well, ulo sa hospitals, facilities, wherein pwedeng magamit 'yung field health insurance, 'yan ang
Yes, ah, Madam, Mr. Speaker, if we read the law, ang dahilan po kung bakit universal coverage po siya is because, at the end of the day, kahit wala, ang, kahit wala ka halimbawang field health coverage at nagkasakit ka, pwede kasing maging miembro ka through point of service at the end of the day. And that's the reason for why, technically speaking, 100 percent talaga covered ang Pilipino. Kasi kahit wala kang ID, ngayon, nagkasakit ka, pupunta ka lang sa hospital, ikaw ay pwede ng maging miembro at the point of service. So, ah, kaya, at the end of the day, kahit nasabihin po natin na mas maraming registered sa NCR kumpara, kumpara halimbawa sa BARM, pero dapat, kung ikaw ay taga BARM at nagkasakit ka, as long as meron kang access to a hospital, dapat pwede ka maging field health member at that point of service. So ang sinasabi ko po, ang problema is, kapag walang hospital, 'yun ang magiging problema. So at the end of the day, ang nagiging binding constraint to an effective field health coverage is really your supply of healthcare facilities.
Yes, ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, hindi ba at the end of the day, ang ipinapakita nito sa atin, 'yung mga mayayaman, may kayang households, ang pinakikinabangan, no, ah, may, ang siyang, pinakanakikinabang sa field health, samantala 'yung mga pinaka mahihirap nating kababayan sa probinsya, sila 'yung hindi masyado, kasi 'yun 'yung statistics na meron eh, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
Madam Speaker, with due respect, pagtitignan pagtitignan naman po natin ang benefit availability, makikita po natin na mas malaki po ang ginagastos ng field health para po sa claims ng ating indigenous members. Um, sa katunayan po, uh... Hindi lang po nagko-cooperate ang ating TV dito, pero mas malaki po talaga ang claims. So, uh, ito po, um, para sa indigenous... Sa ating indigenous members, ang ginastos po as of June 2023 ay 9.3 billion compared to... So pag isama po natin ang senior citizen, that's already more or less 20 billion. Compared to private employees and government employees, 13.9 billion. So clearly, um, mas marami po ng dihamak ang ating subsidized members. Mas, mas malaki ng dihamak ang benefit expenses ng ating subsidized members kumpara doon po sa ating tinatawag na direct contributors o 'yung pong nagbabayad ng premiums nila. So that's one way of showing na mas malaki po ang benepisyo ng mas nangangailangan.
Mr. Speaker, may we get those data na binabanggit ng ating Madam Sponsor para makita natin, malaman natin kung paano ito irereconcile doon sa mga pinakita natin na data kanina, Mr. Speaker? Kasi parang, uh, ayun din sa Philippine National Health Accounts, field health only covered 13.6% share in the total health expenditures ng 2022.
Yes, we will share this with you. And more importantly, um, Mr. Speaker, it would be important to note that ito pong private employees and government employees, sila po ay nagbabayad, hinuhulugan po nila out of their own salaries ang kanilang premiums compared to itong indigenous and senior citizens na subsidized po sila fully ng national government. Kaya masasabi po natin na talagang inaalagaan naman po ng ating programa ang mas, mas nangangailangan po.
Mr. Speaker, may we get the...
Yes, so we will submit the...
Data, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, on to my next question. Ito po ay, "Thank you pala sa DOH for submitting the data requested during the budget briefing. We are glad that the DOH committed to take all appropriate measures to fill all vacant positions pursuant to Special Provision Number 20 in GAAT 2023. And according to the documents submitted by the DOH, no, it states that the DOH will submit exemption request to the Civil Service Commission for vacant positions that have been classified as vital, critical, in order to guarantee that all vacant positions will be filled. Now, may I ask the sponsor, have the DOH already sent a request to the CSC? Kung hindi pa, ay kailan dahil ongoing na ang prohibition?"
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
For your answer that, Madam Sponsor, may I remind the good Congressperson that to conclude the interpolations, please?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Wind-up ko lang po ito, kasi staffing sama rito ng DOH eh.
Thank you, ma'am. Please proceed, Madam Sponsor. Madam Sponsor?
Yes, um... Yes, um, we... The DOH had submitted last June 30, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, oo. Um, the difficulties po cited by the DOH, kung bakit nahihirapan ang mga hospital na punuan ang vacant positions ay due to number one, promotion, resignation, retirement. Ito naman ay reasonable. At number two, limited number of qualified applicants due to fast turnover of nurses. Now, can the DOH through the sponsor expound regarding the fast turnover of nurses? Paano po ito?
Well, ang isang, uh, Mr. Speaker, ang isang dahilan ay, uh, um, greener pastures, mas maraming, uh, opportunities, um, abroad, halimbawa, mas, uh, mataas ang sahod. And at the same time, kilala talaga ang mga Pilipinong nurse. Sa kanilang galing at dahil mapagmahal ang ating mga Pilipinong nurse. Kaya ayun po, maraming opportunities talaga ang ating Filipino nurses. So that's one of the reasons.
Yun 'yung fast turnover of nurses.
Tama po.
Yun 'yung ibig sabihin nun. Now, uh... Mr. Speaker, 'yung last na lang, looking at the staffing summary of DOH's attached agencies and GOCC hospitals, um, 'yung NKTI, saka 'yung Philippine Heart Center ay, um, nakakatuwa po for planning to have zero un-filled plantilla positions starting 23, 2023 and 2024 respectively. Dapat po itong gayahin ng lahat ng ahensya ng gobyerno at hindi lang ang DOH. Imbes po na ginagawa nating kontraktual lamang, ang government employees ay dapat bigyan natin sila ng regular na trabaho at punuan at damihan ng plantilla positions. Does the sponsor agree with this? Kasi 'yung NKTI, saka 'yung Philippine Heart Center, somehow, they've been doing naman their work na i-fill up talaga 'yung positions, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, Madam Sponsor.
Tama po, we fully agree. Sana po ganyan lahat ng mga government hospitals po natin.
Maraming salamat.
Thank you, Madam, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Madam Sponsor.
Salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Kong Arlene Brosas. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, let us remove to the... Move to the next interpolator. I would like to recognize, um, Kabataan Partilist Representative, Raoul Manuel.
Congressman Raoul Manuel, please proceed, sir, Kabataan Partilist.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Advance good morning po sa lahat ng nadito pa rin sa ating session hall. Would the sponsor yield to a few questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Una po, Mr. Speaker, ano ang mga hakbang ng DOH para mangyari ang holistic approach sa drug problem? Kasi, Mr. Speaker, for context, naglabas ng pag-aaral ang UP Third World Study Center na merong 342 drug-related killings sa unang taon ng Marcos Junior Administration. Ito ay mas marami kaysa sa naitalang killings sa huling taon ng nakaraang administrasyong duterte na nasa 302 lamang ang biktima. Mr. Speaker, pinangako sa atin na magkakaroon ng holistic rights-based approach sa drug war na nakatuntong din sa pagtugon sa rehabilitation and health needs ng mamamayan. So yun, Mr. Speaker, ano po ang papel ng DOH doon?
So, um, Mr. Speaker, um, para sa isang holistic approach to, um, our drug problem, well, una sa lahat, siyempre, mental health is a, uh, a key program. And this year, ang ating binadret sa mental health ay 600 million. And, uh, sorry, a total of 683 million, which includes substance abuse. And, uh, para naman po sa ating drug abuse prevention and treatment program, ang proposed budget po for the operations of this program would be 1.58 billion pesos po.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, tingin po natin hindi sapat ang ganong budget. Kaya dapat mahanapan ang paraan ng pamahalaan tayo din sa kongreso para madagdagan ang pondok para sa drug abuse treatment and rehabilitation centers natin. Would the sponsor agree?
Tama po. Uh, napakaliit, especially po for mental health. Uh, matagal na po natin talagang pinipush ang pagdagdag ng budget ng mental health. At, uh, puti na lang at pinoint out ni Kongarin, meron pang dagdag na 309 million for treatment and rehabilitation centers. So, in addition to the 1.58 na nabanggit ko kanina, meron pang additional 309. So halos kulang-kulang 2 billion. At... Okay. Okay, and... Meron pa pong medyo broad itong health promotion, pero masasabi natin na pwede na rin isama as part of, um, uh, our holistic approach to the prevention of drug abuse. Kasi kasama dito ang halimbawa wellness programs. Kasama din dito ang community-based drug rehab. And ang budget po for health promotion is 199.93 million. So pag isuma total po natin lahat na nabanggit ko at isama na rin po ang public health management, the total would be 4.77 billion. And we can submit to your office, Mr. Speaker, the breakdown of all of these items that I had mentioned, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sa usapin naman ng mental health, meron kasing tinatawag na Luzog-isip app. While meron pong ganong app, loadable na merong ganong innovation, Mr. Speaker, ano naman ang mga mas accessible na plano ng DOH para sa immediate access sa mental health services? Given na 'yung mga nasa liblib na mga lugar naman, na doon din naman ay merong mga mental health concerns, ay hindi madaling makaka-access sa devices or maayos na internet connection?
Meron po tayong 362 access sites nationwide. At itong mga access sites naman na'to ay hindi po ito online. So these are physical sites. And, uh, ito po ay with 27 mental health medicine. In 2022, uh, Mr. Speaker, ang naserve po nito ay, um, about 161,000 individuals. At, uh, meron din tayong 75 mental health facilities nationwide, which includes 23 specialty care centers and 52 acute and custodial care facilities.
Mr. Speaker, in terms of our mental health professionals naman, napakababa talaga ng bilang. Mr. Speaker, ano naman ang mga plano ng DOH para gawing kanais-nais ang pagiging mental health professional sa ating bansa? Kasi ang sitwasyon talaga, ang mga mental health professionals, or even health professionals in general, ay underpaid. At ang damdamin po talaga nila ay underappreciated sila dito sa Pilipinas. Paano natin gagawing mas enticing na maging mental health professional dito sa Pilipinas?
Tama po ang observation ng ating gagalang-galang na Raoul Manuel. Based on our available data, meron lang po tayong 651 psychiatrists nationwide. Talagang napakakaunti po dahil, uh, ilan, 116 million na tayo sa ngayon. Talagang kulang na kulang po ang ating psychiatrists. And, uh, meron lang tayong 516 psychiatric nurses and 133 psychologists working in various institutions in the country. So talagang kulang na kulang, na kulang talaga ang ating, um, mental health professionals. So we need to train, we need to build our capacity. In fact, um, this is also a big problem pagdating sa ating schools. Kasi, halimbawa, um, kulang na kulang ang ating guidance counselors. Uh, kasi kailangan na meron silang master's degree para maging guidance counselor, maging qualified guidance counselor sila sa mga schools. So isang problema po yan, kaya kailangan pa natin amiyendahan ang ating mga batas nang sa ganon ay makapagdagdag tayo ng, uh, um, guidance counselors sa school. So that's, that's one problem, so... So to address this, the DOH is proposing the hiring of 1,675 nurse to positions in depth ed elementary schools in priority areas. So itong mga nurses na'to, ang ita-target po ng DOH to, um, to train, particularly for our, um, mental health, uh, programs. At pumayag na ang depth ed for this undertaking.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, we take note of that. And, uh, parallel sa ganong effort, mainam na sa bahagi natin sa House, napasanan natin ang Mental Health in Basic Education Bill, saka ang Mental Health in SUCS Bill. At sana din ay maaprobahan na rin ito sa Senado para finally ay maging batas na. Now, on a final topic, uh, Mr. Speaker, budget natin for disease surveillance. We would like to ask the sponsor, magkano ang budget nun for this year? Magkano naman ang budget for next year sa National Expenditure Program?
Sa ngayon po, ang budget natin for 2024 ay 638 million for disease surveillance, but this will exclude the surveillance centers that will be installed in all DOH hospitals. Yes, um, Mr. Speaker, unless you would want the detailed breakdown?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I asked, baliw for this year, ano ang budget natin, tas next year naman po sa NEP?
So this year, Mr. Speaker, um, it's 1.084 billion, but ang nakapropose po sa NEP is 638 million.
So ibig sabihin, Mr. Speaker, may depersya na how much?
So about 590 million.
Okay, 500.
Of course, of course, uh, Mr. Speaker, sorry if I may interrupt. Of course, the DOH proposed a bigger figure, which was 1.2 billion, pero they were approved at 638 million.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, tingin din natin na dapat mas tumaas pa nga ang budget then for disease surveillance. Dahil as we experienced sa COVID-19, na at first mababa 'yung guard natin, tapos akala natin na wala pa sa Pilipinas, pero nandyan na pala. Tapos, Mr. Speaker, ngayon na nandyan din ang Nipavirus, no? While, of course, gusto natin sound 'yung basis natin, ano, and we don't want to sound alarmist, pero again, dapat, when it comes to viruses at sa mga umusbong pa na pwedeng kumalat na mga pandemic in the future, kailangan talaga several steps advance tayo and proactive tayo sa ating monitoring. Kaya tingin natin, Mr. Speaker, hindi natin mabebest ang surveillance sa mga sakit kung ganito lang 'yung ating budget. Would, uh, sponsor comment on that?
Tama po, the DOH fully agrees with the observation of the Honorable Manuel. And in fact, we would like to add na ang pag-slash po ng budget na 'yan ay ito po magiging consequence. Magkakaroon po tayo ng non-renewal of the contracts of 731 disease surveillance officers nationwide po 'yan. Magkakaroon po tayo ng non-renewal of the contracts of 731 disease surveillance officers nationwide po 'yan. And malilimitahan po ang funding ng ating laboratory confirmatory services. And third, non-renewal of subscriptions to IT services. So kita po natin na these are essential to disease surveillance.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Kaya to wrap up, Mr. Speaker, kesa kung ano-ano ang mga isurveillance natin gamit ang confidential funds, mas mainam na ang focus natin, Mr. Speaker, ay mga gaya nito, disease surveillance. We call na dapat maralign ang confidential funds papunta sa mga mahahalagang programs kagaya ng DOH Surveillance Program, Mr. Speaker. Yun alam po, at maraming salamat sa ating buting sponsor.
Salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Congressman Manuel. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to our next interpreter, I would like to recognize J.C. Abalos for the four-piece party list.
Four-piece party list, J.C. Abalos, you have the floor, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, and to the DOH, magandang umaga po. Um, Mr. Speaker, and to our distinguished sponsor, the World Health Organization prescribed a doctor-to-parent ratio that is 1 doctor is to 1,000 individuals. Is this correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, in a House committee meeting last May, the then OIC of the DOH Undersecretary Maria Rosario Verjera stated that the country needs an additional 114,000 physicians to meet the 189,548 demand and 127,000 more nurses to fill the 300,708 requirement to ensure the provision of optimal healthcare services. Do these figures once met or reached mean that the Philippines will then meet the WHO prescribed ratio?
No, Mr. Speaker, unfortunately not.
Mr. Speaker.
The requirement is 44.5 per 10,000 population. We are currently at 25.4 per 10,000 population. So there is a gap of 19.1 per 10,000 population, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, during the oath-taking ceremony for newly registered nurses on July 29, 2023, Dole Secretary Leguesma mentioned that there are currently 3,640 vacant nursing positions within the government sector. Would you say this is accurate, or maybe the DOH has a more updated figure? May we know about this, po, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the total number of unfilled nurse positions as of June 2023 is 4,468.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to know that there are more unfilled positions. I asked whether the DOH is addressing the issue of unfilled positions because according to the PRC in March, the country has a surplus of medical professionals. Meaning, we can more than adequately fill the available positions and deliver the optimal healthcare services to our people. But then, these medical professionals are not actively engaged in or are not practicing within their respective healthcare roles. That is why, Mr. Speaker, and to our distinguished sponsor, and to the DOH, can we be provided information regarding the current status of the DOH's National Health Human Resource Master Plan? Additionally, do we possess a roadmap outlining how we intend to address the existing challenges, particularly the shortage of healthcare and medical workforce? This is in pursuance to Section 23 of the Universal Healthcare Act, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, just as an update, the master plan was recently approved? By the cabinet? And so the National HRH Master Plan 2020 to 2040. And it is a very thick document. Mr. Speaker, we can provide you with a QR code if you wish.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, for my next question, I would like to ask if we can be provided information regarding the current count of Barangay Health stations nationwide?
Mr. Speaker, we have 25,616 Barangay Health stations nationwide.
Mr. Speaker, do we have data if the Barangay Health Centers, Station, if the barangay health stations are fully staffed with qualified healthcare professionals? And have there been any recent assessments or audits conducted to evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of these health stations? If yes, can we know the assessment?
Mr. Speaker, right now, the requirement is for every BHS to have one nurse and one midwife. But unfortunately, we are unable to meet this standard as a result of our shortage of nurses. We also and, um, Mr. Speaker, unfortunately, it is also very difficult to obtain the data from LGUs on whether the BHSs are compliant or are able to meet this standard, Mr. Speaker.
This is why, Mr. Speaker, I would like to briefly manifest na kailangan sundan po natin at implementhan natin na maayos ang master plan natin sa Universal Healthcare Act. That way, at least mapapprovide natin ng sapat na nurses ang bawat BHS. At bukod dyan po, at least 'yung mga nurses natin makapag-practice locally. Kasi ayon nga po sa mga reports, sapat naman ho ang ating mga healthcare professionals. 'Yung problema nga lang, they pursue greener pastures or end up not practicing in the country. Now, for my final questions po, Mr. Speaker, can we please be provided a detailed information about the recent cyber attack on Philhealth that occurred last Friday?
At the moment, Mr. Speaker, Philhealth is coordinating with the DICT, the National Privacy Commission, the NBI, PNP, and other government agencies. Philhealth is still conducting an investigation. And at present, Philhealth would wish to reassure everyone that our personal information are intact. Nothing has been breached at the moment. In other words, Philhealth Management assures the public that the incident is under control, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, and to our distinguished sponsor. That will be my final question po for the DOH.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and rest assured, as budget sponsor, I will remind the DOH na kailangan natin malaman ang data at the barangay level kung compliant tayo sa ating standards, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Congressman J.C. Abalos. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to recognize the last interpreter for the Department of Health. From the First District of Northern Samar, Representative Paul Daza.
Congressman Rol Daza of Northern Samar, you're recognized, sir. Please proceed. Good morning.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning. I, I'm thinking of two short questions so we can go past midnight. So, uh, thank you to our good sponsor, uh, who's been here many, many hours, and to our guest, Secretary Tedder Bossa and the other officials of DOH. Thank you for your patience and spending the whole day here at the House. Um, first of all, we have a very good program that's helped millions of deserving, poor, needy patients nationwide. As we all know, it's called the Medical Assistance to Indigent Patients. Over the years, Mr. Speaker, we have improved that program. In fact, in previous years, one of the bottlenecks to be able to use that MAIP program in the private sector, there were certain requirements like certifications and things of that sort. And those were basically taken out of the program, which we, which I think was good to improve utilization and to really make it less red tape. So my, my question, Mr. Speaker, is, um, the MAIP program, because it's continuously changing for the better, for the following year to increase utilization for, for the private sector healthcare facilities, because there are many areas with no government, national, or LGU hospitals. And even in areas with government hospitals, sometimes they are overcapacity. So I brought, I brought up this issue a while back. Uh, I think there's some sort of a language that may be included in a special provision for the 2024 General Corporations Act. May I get the thoughts of the sponsor on just making it easier to, to utilize MAIP for private healthcare facilities?
Yes, so, uh, the DOH supports this initiative. Yes, increasingly, the MAIP has become very important to, to everyone. Our, our numbers in terms of out-of-pocket payments, that has dropped particularly because of, um, I, I believe because of MAIP. Um, and so while Philhealth is trying to better improve its services, MAIP is there to actually make sure that there's adequate government support. So yes, we completely agree that, uh, if we can expand MAIP to private hospitals, then that would better serve everyone.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you for that, uh, Mr. Speaker. And thank you for the assurance that we'll come up with a language to, to improve the efficiency of the MAIP program. Uh, it's now being used in private facilities, uh, but the requirements are sometimes burdensome. You, you have to require a MOA and all of that. And also, may I add that, uh, you know, it's correct, uh, in many regions, the MAIP program is somewhat operating better than Philhealth in the sense that uh, the reimbursements for MAIP to the hospitals is faster than the reimbursement of Philhealth. So in a way, it might be good for, for them to somewhat benchmark each other. So I'm interested in, in continuously improving the MAIP program. So thank you for that. And I think it's a good segue. This, this House, in the 18th Congress, passed a very good law. That was sponsored by, as we all know, in the Senate, by Senator Bongo. He was one of the principal authors on the Malasakit Center. It's developed over the years, and you're right, uh, Mr. Speaker, the good sponsor is correct. Uh, MAIP and many other programs' goal is to reduce the out-of-pocket expenses of our poor disadvantaged patients. In the recent year, Malasakit has served, I think, over 2 million patients. If I recall, 2.4 million patients. They're very rich with data, information, they have a database. And because universal healthcare, at least to this representation, uh, means a few things, accessible, quality care, but it also means affordable healthcare. And for poor people, for people who can't afford, affordable means free. And free means really no out-of-pocket or minimal out-of-pocket. Uh, people who can afford go to the private hospitals and they spend. But needy patients, financially incapacitated or financially disadvantaged, rely on, on government support, both national and LGU. So my question is, because I had brought this up to DOH, and also because I want to institutionally help Malasakit to keep on improving the, the operations, I had asked them if they can include in their database what the no-balance billing or what the universal healthcare law considers no co-pay, which is really, you know, no out-of-pocket. So my question, Mr. Speaker, is, uh, what's, uh, what's the DOH Malasakit Center side plans in addressing, uh, getting better statistics with the view of being, being able to really see what percent of our poor patients are still paying out-of-pocket and which ones are the ones being served and there's no out-of-pocket?
So, Mr. Speaker, well, right now, um, the NBB, no-balance billing policy is monitored primarily by Philhealth. Although there is a new monitoring system that is being put in place. However, however, they had just collected the data and they need to process the data. So they are unable to share the results of, um, that recent data collection. Um, but they will submit to us as soon as they're able to process that data. But, but yes, but, but offhand, looking at the numbers, I'm looking at, for example, the off-budget accounts, um, you will see that there is a huge amount of cash balances under retained income for hospitals. It's about, I believe, 28 billion by the end of 2022. So which means that, uh, for public hospitals, once, once you put together Philhealth reimbursements as well as, uh, the government subsidy for hospital operations, there should be enough resources to be able to actually implement the NBB policy. So just looking at the numbers, I am optimistic that hospitals should have every reason to be able to fully implement NBB.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Speaker, I, I think I agree with that. Especially for the national hospitals, the DOH retained hospitals tend to be more efficient because they're, they're, they can retain their income, uh, they have larger funds. They're in fact, they're, they're in fact collecting They're in fact collecting more, getting more reimbursement per bed per year from PhilHealth than LGU hospitals. So those are the good statistics, data that we can get. And I thank you for the assurance that DOH will continue to fine-tune their database because it will serve us in terms of policy and calibrating funding mechanisms with the view that, at the end of the day, we want to minimize the financial burden to poor patients. So thank you for that. And if there's any funding requirement to be able to do that, I would be more than happy to work with the appropriations and the sponsors should they need funding for that because I think that's so critical in furtherance of true universal healthcare. And that's really for disadvantaged, poor patients. Mr. Speaker, I think we've heard many good responses from my esteemed colleague, this sponsor, Honorable Kimbo, and the other vice-chairs who are there helping, Honorable Navah Ko and Garin. Thank you very much for the efforts you have given us tonight. And thank you to the officials of the Department of Health. And also, having no more members of the minority who wishes to propound any more questions, I move to terminate the period of sponsorship and debate for the budget of the Department of Health for fiscal year 2024.
Once again, thank you and good morning, minority. Good morning, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of majority, we join the minority in terminating the period of interpolation for the budget of the Department of Health.
There's a motion to terminate the interpolations in the proposed budget of the Department of Health and its attached agencies and corporations. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The interpolations of the proposed budget of the Department of Health, corporations and attached agency hereby terminated. Congratulations and good morning, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the consideration of House Bill Number 8980. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to suspend said bill. There's no objection. The Chair hears none. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider, on third reading, House Bill Number 8937, and request the Secretary-General to read the title of the bill and call the roll of members for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary-General is hereby directed to read said bill.
House Bill Number 8397, An Act Enhancing the Fiscal Regime for the Mining Industry,
Mr. Speaker, point of order. Mr. Speaker, point of order.
Yes, what's your point of order, Congressman Manuel?
Mr. Speaker, ang hybrid session po ay hindi pwedeng gawin dahil sa Section 89 ng ating House rules, we can only have hybrid sessions or electronic sessions kung meron pong mga riot, civil disturbances, mga extreme events po that would warrant us to have a mixed hybrid session.
Majority Leader.
Move to suspend.
Session suspended. Majority Leader.
Thank you.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we will be voting on priority bills under the LEDAC and the Bills prioritized by the State of the Nation address. In voting on these bills, the Speaker would like to have the participation of as many members as possible that they be allowed to vote and participate on these bills, which were extensively deliberated upon, no less by the Honorable Manuel and myself, especially the MUP and the New Fiscal Regime for Mining. Mr. Speaker, under Section 89, if you look at line number four on page 62 of our rules, the rules are to be construed liberally to allow participation of the members with the concurrence of no less than the minority leader and the majority leader. I beg the indulgence of my good friend Raoul Manuel, since the votes have already been cast, so that the votes of the many members who participated in the voting of this well-deliberated bill will proceed. May I ask if we can proceed with the bill and have this exchange noted in the Journal and Records of this House for future reference in terms of our interpretation of Section 89 on voting via electronic vote?
Mr. Speaker, may I respond briefly? Mr. Speaker, sa ngayon po kasi ay tingin ko hindi naaabot ng 30. I would be glad if mali ako, pero nasa around 30 na lang po at to 300 plus ang members ng House na nandito sa ating session hall. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, if indeed this is a priority, then with no personal offense to members of Congress, dapat po mag-show up tayo if indeed the priority natin na maipasa ang isang panukalang batas para pagbutohan on third and final reading. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, again, mataas pang standard na siniset ng Section 89 ng ating House rules, dapat po merong extreme events like civil disturbances, riots, pandemics, et cetera, that would warrant na tayo ay mag-hybrid session. Yan lang, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I agree with the Honorable Manuel that the participation of the House members is required, especially on the voting of priority bills. That is exactly why this was authorized by the Speaker through consultation with the majority and minority leader. And that is why, if we ask the Secretary-General, the votes already in are enough not only to constitute a quorum but to complete the voting and approval of these bills on third reading. Section 89, I agree, states calamities, of riots and strikes. That is why, under our rules, we ask that it be liberally construed, considering that recently, due to the unexpected weather, including flooding, we have allowed these members to vote via electronic voting so they can participate on the bills that we consider as priority. May I ask the minority, considering that no less than the minority leader himself has concurred with the majority leader and the Speaker on this?
The Chair will now rule. The point of order of Kong Manuel, as far as I'm sit here, is not well taken. The Chair decides in favor of the majority. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I reiterate the earlier motion to proceed with the voting on third reading.
House Bill Number 8397, An Act Enhancing the Fiscal Regime for the Mining Industry, Amending for the Purpose, Section 34B, and Creating New Sections 151-A, 151-B, 151-C, and 151-D, all under Republic Act Number 8424, otherwise known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8937. Abalo Sabante, Abunda, Charon, Sidre, Ako, Padiong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino, Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Taidi, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basko, Bautista, Bautista, Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut, Begdang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon, Uy, Kalde, Kalixto.
Speaker, Mr. Speaker, my vote is no. Mr. Speaker.
Secretary-General, please proceed.
Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro, Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chunggalaw, Ko, Angelica, Natasha, Ko, Elizalde, Copilar, Ko, Huang, Ko, High, Medwar, Damar, Ko, Huang, Ko, Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz, Ambrosio, Cruz, Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagoh, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang, Hirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed, Kali, Demoporo, City, Amina, Janicio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Fostino, Ino, Di Fostino, Michael, Carlos, Di Ian, Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrela, Yodela, Farinias, Fernandez, Feder Antonio, Feder Juliet, Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentebelia, Gallegios, Garcia, Albert, Garcia, Dante, Garcia, Jose, Arturo, Garcia, Maria, Angela, Garcia, Pablo, John, Garcia, Vincent, Gardiola, Garinga, Sataya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Gomar, Gólez, Gómez, Gonzaga, González, Aurelio, Dong, González, Neptali, González, Sandro, Goriseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jarezco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Joribata, Javierco, Olga, Ara, Ko, Ricardo, Ko, Wilton, Kung Hun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Laxon, Owe, Lagman, Lagon, Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Liligar, Dalibanan, Limgat, Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no to this House bill, and I would like to explain my vote.
After the counting, maybe later, Kong Manuel. Thank you, Kong Manuel. Secretary-General, please proceed.
Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano, Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibang, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Navah, Nisa, Noel, Nograles, Juan, Fidel, Felipe, Nograles, Margarita, Nola, Asco, Uwam, Minel, Olaso, Oliveres, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dizon, Padurnas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Pinaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisa, Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Hensha, Remulia, Revilia, Brian, Revilia, Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Yulohyo, Rodriguez, Rufus, Romero, Romualdes, Ferdinand, Martin, Romualdes, Yada, Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, SaGarberia, SaCaluran, Salseda, Salis, Salimbang, Onsalos, Alvame, Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singson, Rochelle, Singson, Ronald, Singson, Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing, Horacio, Swansing, Michaela, Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan, Joseph, Tan, Keith, Micah, Tan, Reynold, Michael, Tan, Samir, Tan, Stephen, James, Tan, Tambut, Tan, Chai, Tan, Huatco, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Tiang, Kotiyang, Tolentino, Tufo, Irwin, Tufo, Jocelyn, Tufo, Ralph, Wendell, Tupas, Tutorti, Umali, Unabya, Unga, Valeriana, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Veloz, Atuazan, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia, Forte, Luis, Raymond, Villia, Forte, Miguel, Luis, Villia, Nueva, Villiar, Villia, Razas, Suarez, Villia, Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristiante, Yap, Christopherson, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, Udi, Vina, Grace, Uj, Jazel, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora, Ampara, Maria, Zamora, Maria, Carmen, Zamora, Isabel, Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8937. Alvarez, Pantalyon, Ataidi, Barzaga, Biron, Buain, Chato, Ko, Elizalde, Duterte, Farinias, Fernandez, Garcia, Albert, Hataman, Ko, Ricardo, Lazatin, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maranyon, Mastura, Mercado, Revilia, Noel, Nograles, Juan, Fidel, Felipe, Pancho, Pumaren, Puno, Romero, Salseda, Singson, Rochelle, Tiang, Tolentino, Versosa, Villia, Forte, Luis, Raymond, Villia, Forte, Miguel, Luis, Villia, Nueva, Villia, Rica, Yap, Cristiante.
With 272 members voting in affirmative, four in the negative, and one abstention, House Bill 8937, as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Representative Arlene Brosas to explain her vote.
Congressperson Arlene Brosas, you are recognized, ma'am. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um... Mr. Speaker, first of all, um, I would like to siguro magbigay lang ng konting pahayag, no? We are, um... We are passing a bill in the middle of the night. Tapos konti lang 'yung tao, Mr. Speaker. Napakahalagaan 'nung bill na ito because this is about the fiscal mining regime. At dapat maintidihan ang taong bayan kung bakit natin pinapasa itong bill na ito sa gitna ng gabi, Mr. Speaker, when in fact, sinabi naman na sa atin before na mag-face-to-face, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, yun na lang nga 'yung portion na pwede naming gamitin, being in the minority, no? Na ang lahat ay ma-involve sa mga bills na pinag-uusapan, lalo na kung nagmamaterito ng nationwide na epekto, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, really, Mr. Speaker, no? Hindi po maganda sa mata ng taong bayan na tayo ay nagpapasa, nagsisingit ng isang napakahalagang bill sa gitna ng ganitong oras ng gabi, 12:24 a.m., Mr. Speaker. Hindi ko maintidihan kung bakit kailangan natin ito gawin, when sabi nga dun sa rules natin, hindi naman hindi naman siya, hindi naman calamity, hindi naman ganyan eh. Saka, we are doing away with the electronic voting na. Bakit ngayon, ganito pa ulit, ano, Mr. Speaker? So, Mr. Speaker, I would like it to be recorded that I dissent on that portion kung yun ang magbibigay sa rules natin ng leeway para hindi umattend 'yung ating mga congresspersons and people here in the plenary to listen to everything, no, ng process nung ating pagsasagawa ng batas, Mr. Speaker. To my explanation, Mr. Speaker, Gabriella Women's Party votes no to the proposed fiscal regime for mining industry as it will not really raise tax revenue collections from mining firms and will in fact be a license for more plunderous operations of both local and foreign mining companies. The proposed bill seeks to impose profit margin-based royalty payments which would in effect lower actual collections as profit margin schedules are unreasonably high. Likewise, the proposed windfall tax is pegged at unreasonably profit margin-based schedules. Imagine, Mr. Speaker, saka palang papatawan ng measly 1% windfall tax ang isang mining company kapag nag-declare ito ng 35% to 40% profit margins sa isang taon. Overall, tax collections from mining firms will never compensate for the long-term disastrous implications of large-scale foreign mining operations in the country. The supposed tax intake from the mining industry cannot also be a substitute for forgone mineral ores which are exported to other countries and which will never be taken back. This could have been utilized domestically for the rollout of national industrialization and the setup of medium to heavy industries. The said bill is also part of the comprehensive tax reform package sponsored and supported by the International Monetary Fund, IMF, and World Bank, forming part of other grossly anti-people measures such as strain package one and the CREATE law and many other regressive tax measures. Now, for these reasons, we vote no to the fiscal regime for mining industry. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman, Congressperson. Brosas, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that you recognize Representative Raul Daniel Manuel to explain his vote.
Kapatahan, party list. Kong Manuel, please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bumuboto ng no ang representasyong ito sa panukalang batas 8937 dahil sa tatlong dahilan, Mr. Speaker. Una, dahil nasa 25 na lang po tayo sa loob ng session hall na ito, habang nag-explain tayo ng boto para ipaliwanag bakit merong mga pagkukulang ang panukalang batas na ito, Mr. Speaker. Pangalawa, malalim po ang problema ng mining sa bansa dahil na rin sa matagal na panahong ipinaubaya ito sa pribadong sektor at sa mga banyagang investor. Hindi nasusolusyonan ng panukalang batas ang malalim na problema ng mining industry sa kasalanan. kasalukyan na nakakiling sa extraksyon at paglalabas sa bansa na ating mga mineral. Nakapaghain na rin tayo ng panokalang batas patungkol sa ganitong reforma. Pangatlo, Mr. Speaker, naniniwala tayo sa kabataan na para tunay na umunlad at mamaksimisa ang industriya ng pagmimina, kailangan pangunahing lutasin ang pagiging export-oriented nito at paunla rin sa sarili nating bakod ang mga downstream and upstream industries na maaari pang ibunga ng isang national mining industry. Tumitindig kami sa kabataan na ang ganitong mga komprehensibong reforma ang dapat na sumulo. Kyai, Mr. Speaker, no ang ating boto sa House Bill 8937.
Thank you, Congressman Manuel. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading, House Bill Number 8969, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to our rules, and for such purpose may request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and there, and as stated. Secretary General, please.
House Bill 8969, an accurate and sustainable fiscal framework for the pension system of the military and uniform personnel, providing mechanisms for the disposition of government assets for the purpose and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8969. Abalos, Abanti, Bundad, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adjong, Advingkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alont, Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon. Amanty, Amatong, Angangara, Kinokino, Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Agonza. Asisotay, Montado, Balintong, Barba, Barber, Baronda, Barsaga, Basko, Bautista, Bautista Lim. Binitis, Bernos, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon. Boldado, Bosita, Biliones, Bosa, Sabuahin, Bulut, Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo. Cagas, Kahayon, Ui, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri. Caso, France, Castro, Jane, Celesta, Chan, Chato. Chua, Chungalaw, Co, Angelica, Natasha, Co, Elizaldi, Co, Pilar, Co, Juanco. Jaime, Eduardo, Mark. Juanco, Mark. Colado, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruzicado, Kuak, Quaresma, Dago, Delipe. Dalog, Da'yang, Hirang, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venesia, Defensor, de Del Mar. De Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed Calid, Demoporo, City Amina. Janicio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte. Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, Dian Paul. Ecleio, Imano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella. Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie. Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi. Fente Belia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante. Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent. Garriola, Garinca Sataya, Gato, Goet, Christopher. Gomar, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio. González Neptali, González Sandro. Griseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn. Jarezco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Jorge Bata. Javier Co., Olga, Co, Ricardo, Co, Wilton. Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel. Lagman, Lagun, Daphne, Lagonsani. Lara, Lazatin, Liligada, Libanan, Limcay Chong. Loyola, Luis Tor, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo. Maseda, Madrona, Magzino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel Maranyon.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, what's the pleasure of Kabataan party list, Cong Manuel?
Mr. Speaker, ang kabataan ay bumuboto ng no sa nakahaing bersyon ng Military and Uniform Personal Pension Reform Bill at thais po nating ipaliwanag ang ating boto.
Knowledge, Congressman Manuel. Please proceed, Secretary General.
Maranyon, Marco Leta, Marcos, Mariano, Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza. Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel. Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita. Nolasco Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuang. Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dison, Padhernas, Paduana, Paglas. Palma, Pinaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña. Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas. Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Hencha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Remilia Ramondjolo. Reyes, Rilio Rivera, Robes. Rodríguez Yuloyo, Rodríguez Rufus. Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes Yedamari. Romaldo, Romulo, Roque Sackdalan Sa Gerberia. Sa Kaluran Salceda, Salis, Salim Bangon Salo, Salva Me Santos, Saulog Silverio, Singson Richel. Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán. Solon, Suon, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Mikaela Angela. Suarez, Talliado, Tamayo, Tambunting. Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chiay, Tan Watko. Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Tiango, Tieng, Tolentino. Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Josadin. Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupass, Tutorti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab. Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso. Velasco, Velozotuason, Vergara, Versosa. Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond. Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis. Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Razas Suarez, Villia Rica. Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Cristiante. Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric. Udi Vina Grace. Ujazel Victoria, Yulo. Zamora Amparo Maria. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8969. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Birón. Buahain, Chato. Co Elizaldi, Duterte. Farinias, Fernandez, Hataman. Co Ricardo, Lazatin. Makapagal Arroyo, Maranyon, Mastura. Mercado Rivilla, Noel. Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe. Pancho, Pumaren, Puno. Romero, Salceda. Singson Richel. Tiango, Tolentino. Versosa. Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond. Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis. Villia Nueva, Villia Rica.
With 272 members voting in affirmative, four in negative, and one abstention, House Bill 8969 is hereby approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raul Daniel Manuel to explain his vote.
Congressman Manuel, you're recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang representasyon ng kabataan ay bumuboto ng no sa House Bill 8969 o ang Military and Uniformed Personnel Pension Reform Act. Mr. Speaker, we have three reasons. Una, dahil muli, nasa 25 nalang po tayo sa loob ng session hall while we vote on this bill and we hear explanations of vote regarding deficiencies of this House bill. Pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, tama naman sana at mahalaga na magkaroon ng reforma para matanggal ang fiscal load ng MUP pension mula sa national budget at gawing mas equitable ang pension systems sa pagitan ng mga civilian on one hand at ng mga militar at police on the other hand. Kung magbabayad ang karaniwang kawani at maging mga guro para sa kanilang pension, mainam lang na ito rin ang prinsipiyong ipatupad sa pagtitiyak ng pension ng mga militar at police at wag ibagsak ang kabuoang fiscal burden sa mamamayan. Kaso nga lang, Mr. Speaker, magiging exempt sa gagawing reforma ang lahat ng mga aktibong police at militar. Pangatlo, Mr. Speaker, nagpanting antenga ng kabataan sa minimum na 3% kada taon na itataas ng sweldo ng mga police at militar sa loob ng sampung taon matapos maipasa ang ganitong batas. Matagal na pong lumalaki ang sahod at pension ng MUPs. Dati naipasa ang House Joint Resolution Number 18 at Senate Joint Resolution Number 11 na nagdulot ng, nasa 72% average increase sa sahod ng mga police at militar, pati na rin sa iba nilang emoluments. Higit pa sa sapat ang nakukuha nila, Mr. Speaker, lalo na ng matataas na opisyal. In exempting active MUPs from contributing to the pension funds, it will be too burdensome for the government before the trust fund becomes self-sustaining. This is why, Mr. Speaker, this representation votes no to House Bill 8969. Maraming salamat.
Thank you, Congressman Manuel. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 9021, copies of which were previously distributed to the members pursuant to our rules, and for such purpose may request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed as stated. Please proceed.
House Bill 9021, en amendating public telecommunications entities and internet service providers to institute a refund mechanism for service outages and disruptions, providing penalties for violations thereof. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9021. Abalos, Abandi, Bundad, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adjong, Advingkula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte. Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon. Amanty, Amatong, Angangara, Kinokino, Magsaysay. Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Amentado, Abilintong, Barba, Barber. Baronda, Barsaga, Basko, Bautista, Bautista Lim. Binitis, Bernos, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon. Boldado, Bosita, Biliones, Brosses, Buahain, Bulut, Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo. Cagas, Kahayon, Ui, Calderon, Calixto, Campos. Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri. Caso, France, Castro, Jane. Celesta, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw. Co, Angelica, Natasha, Co, Elizaldi. Co, Pilar. Juanco, Jaime, Eduardo, Mark. Juanco, Mark. Colado, Coliantes, Corvera. Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo. Kuak, Quaresma, Dago, Delipe. Dalog. Da'yang, Hirang, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venesia, Del Mar, de Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed Calid, Demoporo. City Amina, Janicio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte. Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, Dian Paul. Ecleio, Imano, Enverga. Escudero, Espares. Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie. Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fente Belia, Galleos. Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo. Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent. Garriola, Garinca Sataya, Gato, Goet, Christopher, Gomar. Gómez, Gómez Gonzaga, González Aurelio Dong, González Neptali, González Sandro. Griseta. Gico, Ginto, Gila, Scuchel, Sagedorn, Jarezco, Hataman. Hernández, Herrera, Jorge Bata, Javier. Co, Olga Araco, Ricardo, Co, Wilton. Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel. Lagman, Lagun, Daphne, Lagonsani. Lara, Lazatin, Liligada, Libanan, Limcay Chong, Loyola, Luis Tor, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo. Maseda, Madrona, Magzino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel Maranyon. Marco Leta, Marcos, Maranyon, Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura. Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla. Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel. Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe, Negrales Margarita. Nolasco Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuang, Ordanes. Ortega, Uwano Dison, Padhernas, Paduana, Paglas, Palma, Pinaligan, Pancho. Panotes, Pascual, Peña. Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas. Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector. Hencha, Remulia, Remulia Brian. Rivilla. Brian Rivilla Ramondjolo. Reyes, Rilio Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Yuloyo, Rodríguez Rufus. Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari. Romaldo, Romulo, Roque Sackdalan Sa Gerberia. Sa Kaluran Salceda, Salis, Salim Bangon Salo, Salva Me Santos. Saulog Silverio. Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán. Solon, Suon, Swansing Horacio. Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Talliado, Tamayo, Tambunting. Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Micah. Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James. Tan Tambut, Tan Chiay, Tan Watko. Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Tiango. Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Josadin. Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupass, Tutorti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso. Velasco, Velozotuason, Vergara. Versosa. Villia, Villia Fuerte, Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis. Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Razas Suarez, Villia Rica. Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Cristiante, Yap Christopher Son. Yap Edvick, Yap Eric. Udi Vina Grace. Ujazel Victoria, Yulo. Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call of, second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9021. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Birón. Chato. Co Elizaldi, Duterte. Farinias, Fernandez. Hataman. Co Ricardo. Lazatin. Makapagal Arroyo. Maranyon. Mastura. Mercado Rivilla. Noel. Negrales Juan Fidel Felipe. Pancho. Pumaren, Puno. Romero, Salceda. Singson Richel, Tiango, Tolentino. Versosa. Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond. Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis. Villia Nueva. Villia Rica.
With 278 members voting in affirmative, zero in negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 9021 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that members who wish to explain their votes on the bills approved on third reading submit their written explanation to the Office of the Secretary General for insertion into the records of the House. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion, any objection? Chair hears none. Please proceed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Secretary General be directed to immediately transmit to the Senate copies of the bills which were approved on third reading in today's session. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General, please direct, as stated. Please proceed. Thank you, Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 6527 and Senate Bill Number 2233, Providing for the Enabling Environment to Foster the Growth of Public-Pprivate Partnerships for Infrastructure and Other Development Projects. Namely, Honorable Romeo Momo Senior. Honorable Eliandro Jesus Madrona. Honorable Joey Sartes Salceda. Honorable Ramondjolo Rivilla III. Honorable Sergio Dagooc. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to designate, as stated. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of the House Bill Number 4 and Senate Bill Number 1846 on providing protection to consumers and merchants engaged in internet transactions. The Honorable Mario Vittorio Marvi Marino. Honorable Rufus Rodríguez. Honorable Joselito Joel Sackdalan. Honorable Emigdio Tan Juanco III. Honorable Maria Angela Garcia. Honorable Anna Victoria Velozotuason. Honorable JC Abalos. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion for the designation, as stated. Is there objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 6574 and Senate Bill Number 2200 on strengthening the promotion and delivery of mental health services in basic education through the hiring and deployment of mental health professionals. Honorable Roman Romulo. Honorable Maria, Marie Bernadette Escudero. Honorable Sirakyo Gato Junior. Honorable Stella Luz Kimbo. Honorable Harris Christopher Ongchuang. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
You, there's a motion for the designation of the following members. Is there objection? As stated, the Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Secretary General is hereby directed. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business resolutions. House Resolution Number 1327, Resolution Expressing the Deep Sympathy and Heartfelt Condolences of the House. House of Representatives to the Family of the Transformative Leader of Marikina and Metro Manila, Honorable Bayani Flores Fernando. By Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1330, Resolution Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House to the Family of Bayani Flores Fernando. By Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1332, Resolution Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives to the Family of Honorable Bayani BFF Fernando, Former Representative of the First Legislative District of Marikina City during the 17th and 18th Congresses and former Mayor of Marikina City. By Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Gonzalez Aurelio, Delipe, Libanan Marcos, Romualdes Yedamari, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader. Majority Leader, morning.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1332 for such purpose. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution number 1332. For such purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution.
Secretary General is directed. Please proceed.
House Resolution 1332, Resolution Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives to the Family of Honorable Bayani BFF Fernando, Former Representative of the First Legislative District of Marikina City during the 17th and 18th Congresses and Former Mayor of Marikina City.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 1332 in consolidation with the House Resolution numbers 1327 and 1330.
There's a motion to adopt and to consolidate HR 1327, 1330. All those in favor say "aye".
Aye!
All those not in favor say "nay". The ayes have it. House Resolution 1327 and 1330 hereby consolidated, adopted and consolidated. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn the session until later 9 September 26, 9 o'clock in the morning.
Is there no objection? The Chair hears none. Thank you for the good work and good morning to everyone and see you in a few hours at 9 o'clock this morning. Session is adjourned at 9 o'clock later this morning.